Well, it keeps signing me in as Kathy. So it makes it hard for her to transfer the host to me. We don't know which one's her and which one's me. It brought me an issue. I know, but now the recording stopped.
So can you start the recording again?
I gotta figure out a way to hang on. It gives me the option to record on this computer or record to the cloud. But you want it to report to your computer, right? So do you want me to make you the host? And switch it back again? If I make you the host, then you can go and record again? I don't know, maybe it'll work.
Although it might fall apart. See, I'm worse for that.
I'm not the host yet, though I can't. Right.
Or you just were.
Okay, I'll be right there. And they have little voices. In those with manners.
Yeah, I mean.
Don't understand why it's doing this.
I think.
It might be the first one we sign.
The glare on the two weeks. But I don't like this.
Oh, wow, that's weird.
I'm sorry. And then the technical.
That's true. And we won't have that problem.
All right, well, it is six o'clock, so I think we can get started with the most fun part of our meeting, which is our Students of the Month, and it's our first round of these for the new school year. So we have a lot of kids that we're really proud of and whose teachers have written really nice things about them. So if we're ready to do that, I'll stand over here and I'll call you up one at a time so that your parents can see you and your families and the camera. If you look, kids on the wall up there, that white thing with a blue light on it, that's actually the camera that's going into the TVs. And so if somebody wants to watch it later online or whatever, you want to look at that camera. It's even on YouTube.
Ooh.
All right, and we'll use this little mic right here so that we can hear each other. So our first student of the month is Cedar, Cedar here. Come on up, Cedar. Is your certificate? It's okay. Here you go. Hi, Cedars. There you go. You want to look that way so you can see your mom and dad out there? Look, there's your name. It says Cedar uses good manners and shows appropriate behavior in all areas of school. And at Ross Montessori, it says M is for manners. Congratulations, Cedar. Can I shake your hand? All right, congratulations. All right, our next student of the month is Claire Brock. Claire here? Okay, thanks. No Claire yet? Well, if Claire shows up, we'll call her back up. How about Lexi Flores? Is Lexi here? Look out here where you can see your family, too. I can take a picture of you. There's your name right there. It says Lexi is new to our school this year. She has done a tremendous job of doing all the right things to make herself known as trustworthy. It can be often difficult, often be difficult to come into a new school. And Lexi has been kind, honest, and reliable with all of her new classmates. The rest of the second graders in her class all enjoy working and playing with Lexi because they know she can be trusted and has the courage to do the right thing. When students are around Lexi, they know they're more likely to make good decisions. Congratulations, Lexi. Seems like you're a great student. All right, our next student of the month is Annalise Fromenski. Annalise here?
Hi, Annalise.
You can look at this and you can look out there. It looks like your dad's taken video or something. It says Annalise uses good manners and shows appropriate behavior in all areas of school also. So manners are really important, Ross. Is that something you've been working on at Ross? Well, congratulations. It sounds like you're doing a great job of it. All right, next student of the month is Liam Cisneros. Is Liam here? Right. You're pretty tall, so I'm not going to get down on my knee, okay? All right, and there's your mom. We can look at her so she can take a good picture. It says Liam is a friend to all. He is kind, dependable, and courageous. Liam isn't afraid to stand up for what he believes in. He is a fantastic example of what trustworthiness looks like in our school. Way to go, Liam. Congratulations. All right, and our last one, unless Claire shows up, is Elizabeth Cook Estrada. Is Elizabeth here? And did Claire make it? Okay, we'll have to deliver these later. Well, thank you all for being here and thanks to you students for being such good students and upstanding members of your school. We're very proud of you. All right, you're all free to stay if you would like to hear a town meeting, but you're also free to go. We have lots of items on the agenda other than student of the month, so we do not mind if you need to go. Thank you for being here. All right, could you do roll call, please, Kathy? Here?
Here.
Here.
Chris Hesse.
Marty Silverstein.
Yeah.
Luis Yanez.
Erica Sparhaw. Here.
Luis did let us know he is not going to be able to make it tonight. Moving on, we have a consent agenda with five items on it. First is accounts payable. Second is Board of Trustee minutes from the September 27th meeting. Third item is a liquor license renewal for brass anvil. The next one is a recommendation for appointment to the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission. And the final one is a recommendation for employment to the Carbondale Public Arts Commission. Any questions or discussion on any of those items?
No.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
By Erica, second by Lani. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item is persons present not on the agenda. If you're here and you'd like to speak to the board on an item that's not on the agenda, now's your chance. What is on the agenda is a public hearing, appeal of Planning and Zoning Commission denial of land use application for PI Carbondale LLC/Lova and a draft budget presentation that is not a public hearing. So if you'd like to speak to us on the budget, now would be a good time or anything other than that public hearing, really. Anybody online in Zoom land?
A number of people online.
Okay, so if you're online and you'd like to speak to the board about something not on the agenda, please raise your Zoom hand now. Otherwise, we are going to move on. Okay, we'll keep going. Trustee comments?
I just wanted to thank everybody who was able to participate in the C.Dod Main Street program site visit on October 3rd focusing on 133 north of the Roundabout. I think it was a really great visit. I think we learned a lot about how C.Dot uses 133. And I think we have a lot of opportunities to engage with them about improvements we'd like to see. And I think the timing's great since we're gonna create a transportation plan or a mobility access plan in 2023. So I think we got a good start with that. So thanks for everybody who was able to be there. Working on the draft Affordable Housing Plan based on our work session last week, Lauren and Heather and I met yesterday just to make sure the regional local efforts are gonna in sync and take advantage of the work they've already done, kind of craft some guidelines around buy downs and things that we're really interested in. So good conversation and we'll continue to do that going forward. So that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Colin. Just come around. Lani, do you have anything?
Yeah. Bear reports are up statewide, folks, and the Aspen area is seeing more bear calls this year compared to the last two, which is significant because they're in our wildlife area. So according to the manager for us, and our area is comprised of Aspen to Glenwood Springs plus Eagle and Picken County, just so that you know. As usual, trash continues to be the number one attractant, leading to reports this year. The solution to controlling these artificial food sources is simple, and the ability lies within the decision space of local residents and visitors. Without a change in human behaviors, there is not likely to be a significant reduction in conflicts. Now, as I mentioned, we have a big area. Our specific municipality is doing okay, but in our region, we're up from, we've got 403 calls for Area 8 up from 224 last year, so 184 incidents more. So if I can just ask people to be mindful and be careful, please do your part to be bear aware. I also went to the Senior Expo hosted by Eagle County at their Crown Mountain Community Center in El Jabel, where Jesse Rochelle did a very nice job highlighting the older adult programs offered by our Parks and Recreation Department and Kafka and Heritage Park and Sopers Lodge are also there representing Carbondale-based senior resources. Of course, Rafta at their booth absorbed a lot of public comment around improvement to the local bus services that we're familiar with, as did I just walking around the expo. Let's see, oh, Ruapa had a special board meeting on September 30th that was called to review the 2023 budget and possible expansion of Ruapa's sculpting. Advocate for Roaring Fork Valley's watershed. For those newer at the table and also for members of the public, the Root High Water and Power Authority is somewhat similar to the Rafta Board as a quasi-judicial regional council on water matters within the Roaring Fork watershed. Ruapa offers planning and technical assistance to its jurisdictional members, of which there are seven, by coordinating and administering programs that produce regional benefits and facilitate communication between local governments, the regional and state federal agencies. What we're going to receive from Ruapa for review at one of our upcoming meetings is requests to increase our annual contribution due to inflation and more recently, having adopted organizational professionalism by subscribing to accounting and legal services, expenditures have outpaced revenue that each jurisdiction contributes to, causing the authority to operate on its reserves. So according to the year and financial statement, the operating budget reflected a gap of 9,786 as well as a deficit now in the 10% reserve. So bottom line, Ruapa will be coming to us with a request to augment our annual dues by 2,450 for 2023. So just keep that in mind. It'll be coming formally from the executive director. And then lastly, I stopped by the Indigenous Peoples' Celebration at the Third Street Center yesterday and partook of the Native blessing, which was very nicely done outdoors. One of the highlights was a celebration of the President's October 7th proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day of it, and occurred to me that perhaps integrating the Newt Tribal philosophy in with the leave no trace destination stewardship approach to foster responsible and more sensitive tourism would add meaning to driving that message forward to visitors and local recreators alike. So that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lani. Erica, anything?
Yeah, I have one thing. I had mentioned, I think in August, that Lauren and I met with Ivan, who's the director of Lift Up, about their dreams for a food hub in the area. And he emailed me and asked if we could do a letter of support, but I didn't get more details from him before the meeting. I had asked him to give a little bit more details. But Mike Low had even mentioned it during the co-venture update that their version of Shark Tank, but it's not Shark Tank, their pitch event was going to be focused on nonprofits. And so I think Lift Up is one of the six that's going to be pitching their projects. So I, and I don't know the deadline because he didn't get back to me on that either, but should I just let him know I'll bring it back at our next, the meeting at the end of the month, or?
Who's the letter of support going toward?
It would be that we're kind of supporting Lift Up's hopes and dreams for their local food hub that they want to do. But they haven't given us, all of you, a presentation. It's just been an overview that I've given very briefly, so.
I'd just be a little bit hesitant because we're the potential, like, land use approval body. If they come back, you know, they might be able to do whatever they're doing under existing zoning, I would have guessed, but I would just, I'm like, is that a letter of support? And then it's going to come back to us with this letter of support in a packet for something that we're asked to do. I'm just a little curious, maybe.
I wanted more specifics before I brought it, but I'm realizing that he might say, I don't remember when the co-venture event is. Do you know, Lani? Okay, all right. I'll just let him know that we might consider it, but we'll need more info. And it might just have to be at our next meeting.
Yeah, and I think we just want to be really careful that it's not, that they're not going to end up asking for any approvals from us that we would kind of preempted ourselves of.
Yeah, yeah. More for the concept, not necessarily the physical property.
Yeah. And this might be for our funding, funding this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. That's all I have.
Okay, Chris, anything?
Marty? I have a couple of things. With Lift Up, while I'm very supportive of Lift Up and the work that they do, I'm a little hesitant. This is a little bit vague as to this is someone's private property that they are negotiating with or?
Corporations.
Right, so I think what I had last proposed was that Ivan come and present to us his project. And so this would be kind of preempting that. And so I would rather that you guys hear it from him, what they're thinking and what their conversations with the property owners have been, so.
I went to the Carbondale Garfield County Commissioners' meeting yesterday, which is always fun, kind of like our meetings. This one was a lot of fun. There's a program called Colorado Extreme that a Crown Mountain Park, this individual set up a hockey rink, enrolled anyone who wanted to enroll. At no cost to them. It was free to learn how to skate, free to get the equipment, and they ended up with 400 people participating. And what was very nice about this was 40% of the participants were Latino. And, or Latina. And hockey is not known as a very culturally diverse sport. He had bought some property two miles outside Town and County Road 100. And he was proposing to do the same thing there. And he was asking the commissioners for a temporary use permit to build a hockey rink. And he was granted that temporary use permit. I I wish everyone could have been there. The room was just filled to capacity, overflowing with kids, with parents, with coaches, someone from child welfare. And everyone was speaking in favor of this. And there are people from Carbondale whose kids play hockey there. The people from Unincorporated Garfield, there are people from Eagle, from Blenwood, and we've spoken about activities for kids where kids can feel safe. And this was just an awesome example of it. It wasn't asking for any public money. You know, he was just asking for the zoning stuff, they could construct the rink. So I was just, I was very, very impressed with that. And as a guide for, not a guide, but as a blueprint, we've spoken about ways to be more inclusive about bringing kids, more activities where they feel safe, where it doesn't cost them money to participate. This guy, now he had the money, so yeah, it helps. But even with minimal resources and some creative thought, maybe we could do something here, whether it's an open gym. We've tried different things in the past. We've had a date night at the gym where parents could drop off their kids, teenagers could babysit with them. We've had game nights, but anything that would be more towards getting kids involved in an atmosphere where they're safe, that parents know they're safe, and money doesn't enter into the picture. And that's just to follow up on something we've spoken about before. And I think we need to pursue that as we go into the new year. And with that, I'm just gonna, that's enough for one night.
Another great dimension of that is that the sighting couldn't be better in terms of energy use because you've got a great shaded area there that will not require the same amount of energy to keep that ice clean in the wintertime, so.
Not far from our own ice rink.
Actually, not far from the old ice rink. I believe it's the old Ackerman Lumber Property. And it was just, it was a very very fortunate that this individualized the money to do it, but also the passion to do it. The coaches are bilingual, some of them. And the audience was reflected, our community was about predominantly Anglo, but a significant minority were Latino.
Great, thanks, Marty. Thanks for going to that.
Yeah.
I need to show up at more county commission meetings, it sounds like, all this exciting stuff.
It was a good one. It was a real good one.
Let's see, I just have a couple of comments. One is that the advocates, you know, there's a lot of ballot issues on the ballot for people to learn about this time around. And advocates for Prop 123, which is the proposal to fund a state level affordable housing fund through a fraction of income tax in years where there's a surplus that would otherwise be refunds. Took me a while to understand all that. They reached out just asking for my individual support, and I lent them that support. They may reach out to others on the board. I don't know that we want to get in the business of considering support for every, you know, there's like 20 issues on the ballot kind of thing, but that one does seem like something that's very close to a lot of work we do. And I hope people will read up on Prop 123 and educate themselves about it. I think we all received the Tabor notice as well about our own question on the ballot, the short terminal tax. I was a little disappointed in myself that I didn't think to submit any comments in favor of it. So it says there's no comments in favor, but that's on there again. And I think that it's important that Carbondale residents educate themselves about the ballot question before them, which is to tax short-term rentals at 6% of the revenue per night paid by the people staying there. And I think the main thing to clarify is that it's for rentals of less than 30 days, which isn't in the ballot language. The other thing I wanted to update folks on is I met with some of the advocates for the Crystal River Wild and Scenic designation that, you know, we heard a really brief update and didn't really know what our next steps might be. And Lauren and I are looking for time, probably on a November agenda, to give that kind of a full consideration, presentations, public comment, and then consider a resolution of support. So just so everybody's aware of kind of next steps that is moving forward. So we can, we can get into that more later. That's all I had. Any last trustee comments? Okay, attorneys comments?
I don't have any.
Maybe just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Susan Ryan. For those of you who haven't met, I work with Mark Hamilton at Holland and Hart, and he is on vacation this week, so I'm covering for him. It's nice to meet you.
Great, thanks for being here, Susan. Managers report?
I don't really have anything that won't be discussed in the, in the budget presentation except that, just to let the board know that we are currently working on trying to hire a rec center director and a planner. If anybody knows a building official. Not as successful on that.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Moving on then to the major items on our agenda. First one is a public hearing. This is an appeal of Planning and Zoning Commission denial of the land use application for PI Carbondale LLC/Lova, combined application for minor site plan re- Combined application for minor site plan review, conditional use permit and alternative compliance. Um. Thank you, Kathy. I was just thinking the same thing. They're going to need a mic over there. So yeah, applicants, you're welcome to join us at the table if you need to use a dais as well. We're going to start with um staff. Overview uh the way that we'll run through this. Yeah, Lauren.
I just want to ask Matt a question. Um, is there anybody who's on the Zoom that could be allowed to talk?
Yeah, uh, probably uh just one. Uh, attorneys Doug Larson uh would be a good one. And there are some others here on our behalf, but they're more cheering from the stands.
Just wanted to make sure that we were set there. Thank you.
Um, so just so everybody's aware of the process, this is the first um appeal, I think, that most of us have dealt with, uh, maybe all of us, I'm not sure. Um, so there's sort of some technicalities and legalities, so we're really gonna lean on Jared and probably Susan as well to to make sure that we. Um, do everything according to procedure there. So we'll have a staff presentation. Then the board will ask staff questions. We'll have a presentation from the applicant. We'll answer the applicant questions. Then I'll open the public hearing. Public can comment on what they've heard. Then we'll close the public hearing. Then we will deliberate and try to arrive at a decision or in a decision could be um. To approve the the application, to deny the application, or continue if there's more information needed at a future meeting. Um, so that's the way that that process will go. And Jared, if you're ready, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. So um. A- as was just stated, so um the applicant um Pi Carbondale LOVA. Is appealing the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny its combined application for a minor site plan review, a conditional use permit. And an alternative compliance request. The compliant application um. Uh, requests approval to construct a new building of approximately twenty four hundred square feet. For the operation of a retail marijuana establishment. Um, a minor site plan was required by um the planning director due to the size of the proposed structure and the associated applications. Um, in addition, a conditional use application was required by the director due to the existing lot not meeting. The minimum dimensional standards for lot width or net lot size for the um existing zoning. And um lastly, the alternative compliance request is for an alternative design related to the requirement for landscape islands. In the parking lot um to the rear of the building. So um at the August eleventh, twenty twenty two meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Reviewed and denied the combined applications after holding a public hearing. Um, on August eighteenth, the applicant filed an appeal. Um, with the town pursuant to our development code. Um, and that section of the development code does require. The um decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission to be heard by the Board of Trustees through a de novo review. Essentially a do-over. Um, so we're presenting uh you all with um. The entire public record as well as a staff report. Um, I would like to highlight that the Planning and Zoning Commission discussion. Um, did center on a couple of key items, the lack of an entry along West Main Street. Um, the does the Planning and Zoning Commission's desire for mixed use zoning. As opposed to the planned commercial zoning that exists on the property. And the um proposed uh vehicle oriented design as opposed to the Planning and Zoning Commission's desired um pedestrian oriented design. So um the Planning and Zoning Commission did ultimately deny the application and highlighted their rationale that three of the four review criteria were not met. Um. And those are as follows. The proposal is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposal does not comply with the design standards in the UDC. And the traffic generated is not adequately served by the street network. So um. This was, this appeal was publicly noticed in the Soaper Sun on September twenty second. Um, and the applicant did complete all required mailed and posting um notices on the property. Um, by September twenty sixth. So, you know, I'll get into um. The UDC requirements, um, highlight some of the comprehensive item, comprehensive plan items, and then discuss the alternative compliance. So um. As I stated, the property is currently zoned planned community commercial or PC. That is an obsolete zone district. So when the UDC was updated. In twenty twenty, there were a few existing um. Zone district designations that we didn't want to carry forward. Um, and we didn't want to allow. Property owners to rezone into. Um, but the UDC is very explicit that it does permit. Applicants and developments within these obsolete zone districts while also encouraging applicants to pursue um rezoning of the properties. So um the application is submitted um in compliance with the UDC using the obsolete zone district. Um. The comprehensive plan um identifies this property um as located within the Highway one thirty three corridor. And designates the property as new urban on the future land use map. Um. This designation uh is really intended to balance an urban pedestrian bike friendly feel with the need to accommodate. Automobile access and parking on site. Um, the designation also further states that the building should be the focal point of the site. Located close to the sidewalks um along the street and uh parking located behind the building. Um, I did also want to highlight that um. The the proposed development does largely meet the intent of the comprehensive plan um and the new urban designation. The building is sighted adjacent to West Main Street. Parking's tucked behind the building. Um. One area that we did see where uh the original application deviates from the comp plan slightly is um. The comprehensive concert comprehensive plan discusses at length the need to incorporate pedestrian. And bike friendly details and building access. And so the original application didn't have a public entrance. Located along West Main Street. Um, and that was one of the uh points of kind of contention with the the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we did receive uh subsequent to that meeting, and I apologize it for not being included in the application, but I did. Pass around a plan set. The applicant did demonstrate a um design solution where they altered the um. Building portion along West Main Street to uh move the entry back a few feet and allow for that to be a public entrance. And so we do feel that that design change is a viable solution to meeting. Um, the staff recommended condition that I'll get to um here in a little bit. Um. Kind of going back to. The the comprehensive plan, you know. The the goal of the the comp plan is really to encourage pedestrian activity along Main Street. Um, and so having that public access along Main Street, having that ability for someone to. Walk by, see a business, directly enter the business without having to walk around is kind of a key principle. Um, that is further um reinforced in uh the UDC. Where uh it talks about building design, the needing to have pedestrian features um along. Uh, and pedestrian environment and primary entrance along uh the main. West Main Street for this property. So um we did feel that was a pretty important design change that needed to be um brought into the plan. Um, as far as other. Development code requirements, the proposal does meet the minimum setbacks requirement of the PC zone district. Um, I outlined that in a table on page three of the staff report. Um, the overall landscape concept does comply with the UDC. Except for the parking lot landscape requirement, which I will get into here in a second. Um. The site is accessed off of um a twenty foot road easement which connects Highway one thirty three to West Main Street. That travels between the RE/MAX building and the seven eleven crosses behind the proposed development. Um, along the property um to the uh. West of the subject property and then connects back to West Main Street. Um, so the applicant is proposing to utilize. Uh, the road easement that exists that's paved between the RE/MAX seven eleven to directly enter their site. Um, the building design, as I stated, it's a twenty four hundred square foot, one story building. Um, it is proposed as a repurposed container building. Um, it's going to replace the existing building on site. Um, and you know, overall, the building design does incorporate pedestrian features, facade modulation. Um, as is required in the building design section of the development code. The parking, um, the app or the proposed development is required twelve parking spaces and proposes twelve parking spaces, so it complies. Um, and and two of the 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 kind of deviations from the development code. Um. First, the alternative compliance. So um section five dot four dot three dot C of the Unified Development Code. Um, requires a landscape island that is a minimum six feet wide and seventy seventy five square feet. Um, in size at the end of all parking rows that I believe. Um, have six or more parking spaces. So this applicant application would be required to comply with that. Um, the applicant applicant has proposed an alternative compliance. Um, they did state that the relative small lot width and unique lot shape. Did present challenges with meeting not only the off-street parking requirements, but also the landscaping requirements. Um, and they did propose an alternative design um that provides roughly five percent more landscape area. Increases um that landscape area on the south facade along West Main Street. And um includes additional special attention to the landscape improvements along West Main Street. So. Um, staff does support the alternative compliance request and does um. Find that it complies with the review criteria by enhancing and improving the overall landscape plan. Um, and the facade along West Main Street. And um we don't believe that that would otherwise be achieved through the small landscape islands on the north of the building. Um, lastly, the conditional use permit. So as I stated a- at the beginning, the uh PC zone district requires lots to have a minimum. Size of twenty two thousand five hundred square feet and a minimum lot width of a hundred and fifty feet. The subject property's dimensions is um about ninety five hundred square feet in size and has a uh. Minimum lot width of forty feet. So um we would not permit this type of a lot to be um. Created under the existing zoning, but um the UDC does permit non-conforming sites or lots. To um allow development, so long as the development meets the uh development criteria and the um. Uh, design criteria in the UDC. So um outside of the landscape island requirements. The proposed application does meet all of the requirements. So an alternative compliance. Um, request approval would would uh allow the entire development application to meet the UDC and thus. A conditional u- use permit um. Could be supported and approved. Um, so on page five of the staff report, I've included the review criteria. For each of the um three applications. It does extend slightly onto page six. Um, and a staff recommendation on page six and seven. Um, and just to summarize that, staff is recommending um that the Board of Trustees approve the alternative compliance request. Um, the minor site plan review and the conditional use permit subject to the conditions and findings listed on. Page six and seven of the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have. Um, I would like to note that we did receive. Um, one piece of public uh input. I did send that to you all yesterday. And I forward that to the applicant and it's a um letter from the adjacent property owner. Um, to summarize, uh, the comments are related to site access and the site access that would be um. Through the seven eleven RE/MAX entry. Um, the the public input does kind of. Recommend looking at um site access off of West Main Street. Um. We did talk about this internally at a staff level. We um reviewed this with our public works director. Uh, there were concerns related to the proximity of. That West Main Street access to Hendrick's Drive and the Roundabout. And um the number of curb cuts that could exist there. And so our public works um director and myself. Agreed that the the proposed site access is is likely the the safest. Access and and the best access for the site as opposed to utilizing that West Main Street access.
Okay, thanks, Jared.
Yeah.
That's a big one. Um, I'm sure we have questions. Let's let's focus maybe a little bit on process questions uh if we can, as well as some of the details. And then we're going to hear a lot more detail from the applicant and they'll be able to address some of those. And Susan's available as well if we have any um. Any kind of the legal side of questions. I mean, the one thing I would point out is just for us to really pay attention to the um findings and the criteria. Um. In our ultimate decision, but questions for staff at this point.
Um, this is mainly on process. So is there, since there has been a change in layout with one of the concerns that um planning and zoning brought up? Um. But it doesn't go back to them for a a review. It's now.
Correct. It it's completely before the Board of Trustees to perform the. Uh, essentially the Planning and Zoning Commission review through that de novo review.
Okay.
And we think that's appropriate, that that there can be a change.
So I I think the change is more demonstrating that the applicant could meet our. Recommended condition. Um, if there were concerns that that condition could or could not be met. We can certainly work with the applicant to fine tune that. Um, if. If the application um is approved by this board with that condition, I think it was more just illustrative to demonstrate that. That that it could be achieved.
Okay, thanks.
Chris, did you have anything else?
I mean, I've got plenty.
Half before we hear from you.
I guess, do you have any um understanding of the history of this road easement and how this was established?
I don't. Um, I I looked into it and to be honest, I could not find much. I I wonder if um. The adjacent property owners have much history, but um. You know, I know it was preceding the roundabout. And so I I do wonder if there was something with kind of the amount of development here to have a. Uh. A bypass around that um. Lighted intersection.
I guess my concern there is if we have this supposedly sketched out road easement and then the public works director says that this. Entrance onto West Main Street is not function- functionally workable. Is that easement even a, I mean, may legally exist, but does it functionally have any reality? Um. If it's, if it can't be e- executed.
You know, i- it exists. I I think if you look at at the site there, um, there is kind of a. A a gravel kind of beat out area. Um, so clearly there is some travel on it. I just don't think we wanted to make that the primary entrance. To this property. Um, you know, we could ask the the. The applicant and the developer to, you know, cordon off the driveway past the proposed improvements that they're making. Um, I I think if. If additional development were to occur on the property immediately to the. West of the subject property, I I would think there'd be some additional conversations about that road easement. That alignment. Um, and and does alternative alignments. Make for a better um roadway network solution.
I mean, we have a common landlord between this property and the adjacent property.
Correct.
So it could. Could it be could potentially incumbent upon them to. Work out their property lines to some degree to make this more functional and logical for users. Is that stepping over our?
It it could. I would say there'd have to be a lot of change to the. Subject property to get it into conformance with the minimum lot size requirements of the PC zone district. And so um I I don't believe it would be necessarily the easiest course of action.
Would a would a um conversion to a mixed use zone district change those parameters potentially? And.
It it would. I did not take a look at the minimum lot size. I can look it up real briefly and and get back to you on that here in a second. Um. But I I I don't know those minimum lot size requirements off the top of my head. I apologize. On that here in a second, um, but I, I, I don't know those minimum lot size requirements off the top of my head. I apologize. Thank you.
Yeah, um, has it been a study or an estimate of how much traffic is going to be generated by, uh? This building?
Yeah, so, um, I believe it was included in the packet. There was a, um.
It's seventy-three.
There was a, a, I think it was Sopris Engineering did a, um. Did a analysis of the, um, of the anticipated vehicle trips. Um, that was reviewed by our Public Works Director and, um, we didn't have any concerns with.
Okay. I guess, my question is, um. Given the amount of traffic going through that roundabout now and people turning in. To that parking lot to get to seven eleven. That, uh, it's going to increase the amount of people turning in there. I don't know. I, I'm just concerned about the, uh, traffic flow there.
The, through the, like, through the seven eleven RE/MAX.
Well, you're speaking about that the easement is between the seven eleven parking lot. And the RE/MAX building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so effectively that's a parking lot that to present time has been shared jointly.
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, and that parking lot gets pretty crowded in the morning. And evening. So, but there's going to be more vehicle traffic going through it. I'm, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the impact that may have.
You, you know, we, we were talking about some potential solutions at a staff level and we think, you know, the addition of maybe some. Some curb and gutter along the northmost, um, parking spot kind of adjacent to seven eleven could be. A solution that, um. Helps, uh, identify that there's a parking lot there. Um, in addition. Um, some, you know, potentially a painted line on the northernmost edge of the, uh. Uh, of the roadway easement, kind of again, alerting people to the fact that a driveway or a roadway kind of. Goes through, um, the parking lot might be some additional visual clues that. Um, help people see that i- it's not just a parking lot anymore, that there's something. Just beyond that, that vehicle travel needs to access.
Any other questions for staff, Marty?
I guess, um, as, as it goes, as goes for the, um. The entrance on Main Street, that's, that's, um, purely a design. And not an operational requirement necessarily that that's a front entrance, because I can imagine a situation where it's designed. To the standard of being a front entrance, but. A staffing situation leaves them in a situation where they just close that entrance because they can only. They only want to have, because this to me seems to suggest that you're going to need two different people checking IDs at two different doorways. And checking product leaving the establishment. And that sounds like a burden on the employer that they may choose to forego at a certain future date. Thus that, that entrance is once again rendered meaningless.
So I guess if you're asking if it's a, it's not a condition of approval in the staff recommendation that that actually function at all times as an entrance.
It, it is, um, not at all times. So I would recommend then, uh, modifying the, uh. I can. Modifying condition number four to, to clarify that, you know, in perpetuity, that stays a public entrance if that's kind of the. The desire of, of the Board of Trustees, um. But when I, when I did talk to the applicant, they didn't seem to have any issue with having that be a public entrance. Um, but I'd let the applicant kind of speak more to that, um, in detail, especially regarding operations of. Of the retail establishment.
Okay. Uh, Lonnie, you're calling. Any questions of staff before we hear from the app? Okay. Susan, was there anything? I know that you're kind of jumping in here, but just from a legal point of view that we need to be aware of, especially as this is an appeal. It's under existing zoning rather than a rezone or a PUD. Anything that you'd ask us to be mindful of?
One thing I would just add, I think Ben, you said at the beginning that your options regarding this appeal are to approve. Or deny or take it under advisement. And I would just clarify, you can approve with any sort of conditions that you decide would be. Useful for the property. So that's also an option you have tonight as well.
What happens? We, we're missing one trustee tonight. So if we were to have a tie vote, would that be that the decision of the planning commission stands? We're thinking about.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm going to have to think about that. My gut reaction is no, but, um, let me look at the code and see if I can find a provision.
Okay, um, I don't think I have any questions for Colin right now, or sorry for Jared right now. Um, or for Colin, for that matter. Um, so let's hear from the applicant. Yes, make sure the red light's on and that'll tell you it's on.
Oh, the red light's on now.
All right.
Excellent. All right. Uh, well, good evening, Mayor and, and trustees. Uh, good to see you all again. Uh, for those of you that recall, my name is Matthew Schifrin. Um. I'm here representing Pioneer Interests, uh, PI Carbonale or Lovaco, which is our retail business. Um, for context, uh, I'm a native to the Roaring Fork Valley, grew up here, uh, up in Missouri Heights, down, uh, well, up valley, I guess, in Aspen as well. Uh, my two partners, my wife, uh, couldn't be here today. Unfortunately, she's taking our co- uh, child to a, uh, kids function, uh, with our school. So. There are a lot these times of years. And then, uh, my other business partner Sean, who also grew up in Carbonale, uh, is not here. Uh, but I'm here on behalf of the hundred and seventy-two team members that we have in our company. Um, just for context, Pioneer Interests is a vertically integrated cannabis business based in Denver, but with operations all over the state. Uh, we're also expanding into Illinois, which is exciting. Um, but what I think differentiates us both from a, uh, cultivation, extraction. And retail business is that we're wildly focused on our culture and our mission, which is we grow plants, people and community. Um, what that means is we want to deliver the best products to our customer. We want to grow our people by developing them from within, right? Teaching by showing, not by telling. Uh, and most importantly, the community and giving back to our community. And so when I sit here today with, with all of you and hearing some of the concerns that you have. Um, it's, it's funny because this is what happens every time I go to a, a council meeting. I'm like, I want to fix these things. I want to, I want to work with you all. So. Uh, I think that's exciting. But, um, in terms of why we're here today, so if you all recall, I think it was back in July, may have been just before then. Uh, we came to receive our conditional permit. Um, the town council, uh, voted unanimously to award us with that, uh, with that. And then we went to the PNZ hearing. Um. Won't get into details on the PNZ. Obviously you guys are working through the process right now, but I'm joined today by Sopris Engineering who are. Um, our engineers on the job and we'll talk to you a lot more in terms of the site plan. Uh, you know, the UDC meeting easement and the code requirements, uh, that's above my pay grade, but, uh. Uh, what I will tell you in terms of operations, so Lova is a retail business, uh, dispensary. We are recreational only here in Carbonale. Uh, this is going to be one of, uh, several of our stores. Uh, for Amanda, for Sean and myself, our dream has always been to come back to the valley, right? And to be able to operate a business here. This is our first foray into that. So we are extremely excited about that. Um, in terms of Lova, uh, it's meant to bridge the legacy and third wave retail experiences. So legacy consumers looking for the best quality products. At the best price every day. Uh, third wave consumers are, you know, uh, everybody else that is quite kind of, uh, exploring or beginning to understand cannabis. And so bringing a retail experience that is elevated. There's a common stigma with cannabis. Uh, that it's, you know, people with hoodies and, and terrible music and a, and a rough experience, right? So we've completely reversed that, um, and bringing, uh, really a retail experience that we believe will resonate with the Carbonale consumer. Um, and as a result of that, uh, elevate sort of the, the overall experience. Um, the building that, that we've designed here, uh, in conjunction with our architects, with Sopris and frankly, with a lot of work with staff as well. Over the course of truly the last year, uh, prior was Janet, um, then it was John and now, uh, Jared, who, uh, by the way, great, great presentation. Um, so you know, there, this has been a very extremely tedious process in order to try to fit a building. That meets all of Carbonale's interesting code requirements, um, into what is a very interesting space. For those of you that are aware. The building that exists there today is a derelict nine hundred square foot building from probably the nineteen fifties, right? Right behind a seven eleven. So what we chose to do was bring an upcycled building, um, that has various aspects of, of, um, carbon footprint reduction. Uh, friendly bike easements and, uh, especially with, um, uh, how important it is to the Carbonale, uh, resident for bike access and pedestrian friendly. Um, and, and also just meeting the aesthetic desires of the town as well. So, uh, this team as well as, uh, Doug and, and Bethany who are on as well. Our architects, they, they were worked tirelessly with, uh, staff. Uh, and ultimately came not only before we went to the PNZ the first time with a staff, uh, recommendation for approval. But you're hearing again Jared, uh, recommends staff approval or is providing staff approval recommendation. Again, I think you get my words. So, um, in terms of, uh, Chris, your, your concern about the, the, uh, access point. So PNZ, the biggest takeaway that we had from that meeting is not just having sort of a facade entrance on the backside. But in fact, having a real entrance on the main street side. We took that into consideration and thought, yeah, of course, why not? Um, so as a result, we were able to move the door back just ever so slightly. That's the difference, uh, major difference in the plan that you have in front of you versus what was in the packet. Um, uh, we've moved the door back, one for, uh, further friendlier, uh, pedestrian access and bike access. Um, but then also turn that into a genuine, uh, entry for customers. Um, to answer your question, Chris, we are absolutely comfortable with actually maintaining that that be an entrance, uh, uh, fully available or. Open, uh, as the store is open, right? So we would never shut down that access point. Um, in terms of staffing it, actually, we are a lean mean operating machine. I think that's one of the things that differentiates us. So as, that was really the first question that we thought about is more from a safety perspective of how are we tending to the customers' needs while simultaneously meeting that? Um, what we've come up with are di- different ring, uh, uh, doorbell rings for each location so that the team knows. Okay, that's the, the front entrance, Main Street, or, or that's the parking lot entrance. Um, simultaneously, you will notice that, uh, there will be a host stand on either location. So that becomes sort of that barrier point for the customer that when they walk in, they're essentially in the restricted access zone. Uh, we're able to then come up, meet them, greet them, check IDs and then let them, uh, move into shop. Um, so that's one of the things that we're, we're very sensitive to. Um, obviously, I think the only other thing that I really want to address, uh, and can certainly a- uh, answer the council's questions is related to operations. Uh, is just, uh, Mr. Luttrell's comments about, uh, the, the access, right? Um, we are sensitive to this as well. It is an interesting space, interesting access. Um, a- as you're aware, you know, i- even staff recommends like this is the best option for, for gaining access to the, to the location and meeting the parking requirements. Uh, while also meeting the landscaping requirements. Um, so what we thought is how to, uh, really utilize better signage for, you know, slowdown and access. Um, a- in order to really, um, make sure that that is a safe entry, uh, for both our, uh, our team. And our customers as well as the local residents in and around the, uh, the neighborhood. Uh, we plan on working closely with the seven eleven as well. Uh, Marty, to make sure that, um, uh, you know, we're all aligned in terms of traffic that's entering that space. Because to your point during a rush hour, it could get a little bit more busy for sure. Um, but through traffic studies and in our analysis of, of, you know, peak times, uh, we still feel that it's going to be very safe. But I think that Yancy and Kyle will, will speak to that in greater detail. Um, but that, uh, that is pretty much it. So we appreciate your, your, uh, your review and consideration and, um, hope to be a part of the community here.
Great. Thanks very much.
All right. Hi all. My name's Kyle Sanderson. I'm with Sopris Engineering, um, project manager and, and, uh, PE. Um, Matt hit on a lot of what I was going to talk about, but I'll, I'll actually, um, touch on a few things related to the site plan. So. Um, as Jared mentioned, you did get in a, a revised packet with our drawings. If you want to flip to, um, our site plan, which is C three point O. Uh, if you don't have that one in front of you, it's also in the packet. Um, I'll just touch on a few things here. Uh, we did begin the project, uh, a while back with Janet and we knew it was going to be a unique site. The width of the, of the site alone, uh, presented challenges and constraints that. We, we haven't typically seen like, um, access from the front of the building to the back. Um, wasn't really an option with, with how skinny that, that lot was. So. What we decided to do was really take advantage of the building size, try to, uh, push that to the front of the lot. Um, per comp plan and UDC, um, goals and, and requirements. And we, we were able to still have enough separation from that seven eleven building to feel comfortable and then. Um, provide a sidewalk on the west side of the building with, within our lot boundary. Um, so that sidewalk on the west side does connect our parking lot. On the north side or back of the building to the, the front side on Main Street. To continue on, on, uh, pedestrian access, we do have a proposed eight-foot concrete sidewalk along West Main Street. Um, that will be able to tie on to future development of. If seven eleven or the lot to the west were to develop, I think that would be a travel corridor that pedestrians would use quite a bit. Um, so, so those were a, a couple of those first constraints that we looked at and then parking was, was a challenge. It always is. And our building size, we actually had, um, if you look at that building, it was a rectangle in the beginning. Um, the number of spaces were, was around fourteen or fifteen spaces and we just could not figure out a layout to work. So what we did was we, we used, um, we talked to the architects and, and Matt and his team to see what we could do and. That little bump out you see there provided a, I'm not an architect, um, but provided more, um, breakup of the building and some cool. Characteristics that we could take advantage of. Um, and being that that was on the main street side, we, we felt that that was going to really be the, the visible side for pedestrians, for traffic. For, um, people that would be going to this, to this site. So in looking at that, um, we were able to reduce the number of parking spaces to twelve. And came up with the configuration that you see in the back. Um, we worked with Janet quite a bit on different solutions. Um, we talked about potentially. Asking for alternative compliance on the number of parking spaces, maybe reducing that down to less, less than what was required. Um, town staff didn't, wasn't super, um, I guess on board to, to go with that as a solution. So what we did was. Uh, looked at the al- alternative compliance a little closer and decided that we might be able to take advantage of. A reduction in the, I'm sorry, not a reduction, but, um, the. Landscape islands that Jared was talking about and in lieu of having those landscape islands really enhance. And increase the amount of landscaping that we had on the site. So just as a reminder, in PC Zone District, um, ten percent. Of landscaping on the lot is required and we're closer, we're between fourteen and fifteen percent. So we do have, um, more than the required and, and as the, the team had talked about that south side was really focused on. With enhancements and, um, pedestrian access and landscaping. We do have entrances on the south and north side. As mentioned, we, we re- we pulled that door back as Matt mentioned. Um, so it is a recessed entry. So it really does allow for that full eight-foot width of sidewalk in front of the building. Um, and then, uh. Yeah, I, well, I'm going to turn it over to Yancy and he's going to talk about traffic and, uh, and the easement a little more. So thank you.
Thanks, Cole.
Thank you. Um, Yancy Nico was Sopris Engineering. And I, I want to share a few other things that I learned about this project and, you know, I've been doing work in Carbondale for. Wow, almost thirty years. And this project has some other things that are kind of unique. That I think makes a Carbonale type and, and that is, is it's built out of a recycle type. Structures, but this is a, a, a temporary potential site. So when this building or this business loo- moves to a new, new location. The building gets recycled. It gets taken apart, put on a truck and moved to a new site. So the building is a recycle. Uh, which is, I think, very creative. Um, and since this applicant is a leasie of the land, and as you guys probably all know. I do also represent Briston that owns the other parcel and this parcel. And we've had a lot of discussions about. The mixed-use zoning and the comp plan of these parcels. And we see this as a temporary where he doesn't know what he wants to do yet, but we see coming in with a rezoning. Of the mixed use for both these parcels and trying to figure out a better long-term traffic solution. But the easement and the access is, it was there and when the roundabout was built, was discussed a lot. And as you know, the roundabout drawings put a curb cut there because that access is still used today that comes out on Main Street. We don't want to necessarily promote that because of the things that Kevin probably shared with Jared about that location with the roundabout in Hendricks. So I see that also as a short term, but. The trail that's I sees here, he has ownership and interest in that. So he has to agree to any changes to that access. So we see that as a master plan of both those parcels and the, uh, mixed-use zoning down the road. And that's why, you know, this is a temporary use and, and you know, Janet and I had a lot of talk about that. We look at it, well, temporary could be twenty years, so we have to make sure it looks good, it functions good. But at the same time, not close a a solution to future access and utilities and infrastructure. I personally believe that this portion of the town will eventually connect to Hendrix. You know, the seven eleven, Latrells, these parcels all will get a new entrance, maybe even a public road to Hendrix. But you know, that's for future decision. So Bristol and I talked a lot that, you know, this is a short term use to kind of revise that rundown building in in something that could be recycled. So that one I wanted to share with you from my standpoint where I said makes it kind of a unique project for Carbondale. The traffic, it's kind of interesting because this is a kind of a new use. When I say new use in the last ten, twelve years, and we got the IT that has some samples on us to help us to generate how many peak trip hour trips would be generated. And and there's a study in Colorado and Oregon. And when you look at that study out, the IT is a professional, you have to be careful. You get a couple of samples up here on the grid and you get a few down here and then you get a line through the centered averages and it tells you how many trips. I think Carbondale and you guys sitting there probably know it better than I do that Carbondale is bicycle and pedestrian oriented more than most communities. I'm sure these samples were out of Denver and Portland. But with that said, we were very conservative because we didn't want to promote people out onto Main Street. We think that needs to probably stay open because it's being used by the neighbors somewhat and we don't feel we have the right to close it. But we don't want to promote that direction, but some users might. So we didn't do a distribution towards Main Street versus one thirty three. But the IT suggests about seventy cars per a peak hour. And keep in mind, that's thirty five in and thirty five out in that peak hour. It's not seventy in and seventy out, that's total trips in and out. And then typically we'd use about a twenty or fifteen percent mall to model reduction if you're close to sidewalks and pedestrian access. We didn't include that in our report because in our opinion and Kevin's opinion that the twenty foot road with that kind of peak hour has capacity. Now, seven eleven is kind of unique, but to give it kind of a perspective, that's about a car every minute, minute and a half to two minutes during that peak hour. This facility, the IT indicates you don't have hardly any traffic till about noon. So there is no AM peak traffic like you do at seven eleven, so that's a benefit. And we do see or their study indicates the PM peak traffic is a little bit later than a retail peak that might start at five or so, that it might start closer to six thirty or so. So those are some things to kind of balance it. So from where I'm sitting, I don't see, yes, it will generate some traffic and maybe a little congestion from one thirty three over at certain times with seven eleven. But I don't see it being a safety issue, it's more of a level of service type scenario. And we would be glad to work with Jared or staff as we get closer to building permit set. If there's some striping or curb or in some enhancements that we could do or the neighboring Latrells, if there's something that's between there because it's not really clear. We, some of the pictures that were submitted in my experience being here all these years, there's always different cars parked and trucks and different things in front of seven eleven all the time. And I think it's just something we have to help learn community and and maybe better sign and stripe or whatever. But we don't control that whole easement, so it'd have to be jointly with the other parties. So I wanted to share that with you, we'd be glad to answer any questions and and go from there.
All right, thanks, Yancy. Is that the end of your presentation so we can start asking you questions?
extensive.
All right, all right, great.
And of course, we have the architects on if you have something about architectural elevations of the building that they could share with you.
Okay, maybe just before we launch into questions, just is there anything that they would like to share? I mean, it's pretty clear plan here. Anything that architects on Zoom wanted to share as part of the applicant team?
Doug? Yeah, can you hear me here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I would appreciate the opportunity to talk for the board tonight. The building is consists of about twelve recycled shipping containers. And we, these are new containers that come from the Asian markets, come to the United States with product on them. And of course, there's hundreds of thousands of containers that just sit in the stockpile because we don't have containers or product going back to the Asian markets, raw product going back there. So we buy the containers from the shipping companies and the owners and and build buildings around the world. We build everything from tiny houses to hospitals, COVID, we built twenty one hospitals during COVID. We have a TV show on HGTV called Container Homes, you've probably seen that. The containers here, we stealth and we personally, I don't like the looks of a shipping container. So we actually take it and put stealth panels on the side of it, just like you see in a car dealership today, same type of panel, same manufacturer. And it really enhances the beauty of the of the building. The nice thing about the building, we can take it like Yancy and and Matthew said, we can take it apart and move it to another location down the road. So we're building, we're going to be building several facilities for love over the the next couple of years in Colorado and in Illinois. And the nice, the nice thing about it is that these are fast. We build in our factory, ship to the job site here, and will be done about one month construction. So eighty percent of the construction is done offsite. While we're doing the site work, foundation, driveways, parking lots, bringing the power in, utilities to the building. We're also building the building in our factory. We're going to get ready to ship it since we had a building permit, we'll ship it to the location and about a month later it'll be open and running.
Thank you. Let's start with questions then, Chris, looks like you have some.
Sorry, I'm the one here. Yes, I'm getting back to this road easement. You mentioned that that is it Paul Latrell is has to sign off on changes to the easement or as a?
Though I'm saying is is there's multiple parcels. The plat was done in nineteen eighty eight that grant that easement is, and I have to agree, you know, we've looked at it for years, well before this application. It wasn't well done on a dedication and the use and sharing maintenance or anything. But from history is is, I think, the RE/MAX, I can't say if seven elevens used it to go out at certain occasions throughout history. This parcel used it, the other parcel to the west. So generally, it was an easement that cut from one thirty three over back when it was a two lane highway. And I don't even, I'm not sure when the signal light was done at Main and one thirty three, if it was a more of a stop intersection and not even a signal light. So so we can't vacate it or close it without all the interested parties that has interest in that agreeing to it. I know it's used now.
And was that pursued as an option?
Of closing it?
Well, or modifying it, I agree with you that the the logical solution to this seems to be connecting it to Hendrick Drive in the long term. And instead of this tortured angle thing here that we don't, you know, this this orphan parking spot off the left side of the seems like it's problematic in the long run if it's
Yeah.
If if it if it's going to be, you know, not even what the the plan does, is that if we're going to go in a different direction in the long run? How are you gonna, I guess, deal with that, I guess, would be my question.
Well, I think our thought was, and I'm I'm kind of speaking with two hats here with the property owner, was is is this is a temporary lease on the land and not a long term master plan of the two parcels. So it didn't really benefit to change this entrance for this, I'll call it first phase or short term. But we don't envision it ever staying that way, making sense for anybody. The RE/MAX parcel, if it stays or redevelops without a connection to Hendrick. So we just don't feel we know where to put it and enhance it anymore and really don't need it for this project, even though it might get used some. I would say both entrances at seven eleven, one thirty three and Main Street are right in, right out, which don't affect capacity and really enhance the safety because there's nobody that can try to cut lefts in or out. So that's why I say it's more of a of a level of service and not a safety issue. Now, if either of those were full movements, then it would be a whole different discussion, Main Street or one thirty three, but they're not.
Was there any um investigation of parallel parking? I mean, it looks like you could potentially have two parallel parking spaces on West Main Street, which now you've got an entrance on that side. That seems like it might make logical sense to me if somebody wanted to pop through and not deal with this, they could potentially park there.
Yeah, now that would be up to the town, that the town controls the public right of way and the parking and we don't get credit is on offsite parking. So we wouldn't reduce our twelve parking spaces because of that. But yes, if the town felt those fit and wanted to stripe it, I don't think from our side we'd have a problem with that.
Because I, yeah, it would look like it would be a shared, a shared, it'd have to be a shared thing between the two different owners of the.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this point, Chris?
I guess, yeah, I guess would love some more. You mentioned you've got a got a program of giving back to the community, can you go into what specific projects and policies and whatnot?
Absolutely, so you know, what we have a tendency to do is is work on good neighbor policies with, you know, various communities that we work with. Traditionally, that's been more at like sort of the micro neighborhood level. But absolutely, I I think even just hearing Mr. Silverstein's comments about, I called you Marty before, forgive me.
Okay.
So so, you know, making about, you know, whether it's it's school or after school activities for the youth. You know, from our perspective, what we've traditionally looked at, I mean, there's there's key issues that are are important to us. Food insecurity is a big one, as a matter of fact. You know, community cleanup is a big one that that oftentimes I always didn't think was such a big emphasis. But it turns out that the communities are like, please help us with this. So we have a lot of different good neighbor agreement references that that we could support. But I think what I would love to do is then find out, you know, pursuant to the community, what are the biggest needs of of the community? And whether that's committing treasure, if that's committing time or resources to that particular initiative, we would love and commit to doing that, absolutely. And that's, I I think, just again, how we choose to give back to the community. And I think there's a lot of companies that give a lot of lip service to that and we are definitely a world apart from that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's keep going with our questions, Marty.
Um, so correct me, maybe I misunderstood you. So this property is leased from Briston, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then how long is your lease for?
Currently, we have a five year lease, which we're already about a year into considering.
Do you have options so soon?
We do have options, yes. And you you know, I I think to what Yancy said of this being a short term project, I I can't put a commitment on it. But what I will tell you, Mr. Silverstein, is that there have been discussions with the landlord about finding other locations in the town that may be more permanent, let's say. And very much so in terms of what Doug was talking about in terms of our architect. One of the reasons we love this building is because it this building design is it's movable, right? It meets aesthetic requirements, it's a gorgeous building, you would never know that it's really built out of containers, it looks like a permanent, you know, building. But in a three day period, we can essentially disassemble, put it on a truck and and park it out.
Without a tank.
Precisely.
And so, okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear about this. So you have an initial five year lease and you're saying you don't have options for an additional?
We we do have an option to extend, yes.
Okay, for an additional five years, for instance?
For an additional five years, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're taking five with an option for five more?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
But to to Yancy's point, right, even when Janet and and forgive us Jared for, you know, bringing up the sins of the mother, so to speak. But you know, obviously, the the consideration was how does this fit within the UDC? If it has to be, you know, for the full term of the lease, let's say. I I don't think, and and again, don't want to make commitments here, but that that's nobody's real intent.
Okay, thank you.
Is the building also permanentable, I guess I would say?
Is, yeah, absolutely, if it wanted to be a permanent forever structure. So the interesting thing about container buildings, it was back in like two twenty, two thousand and three, I believe, that they were made part of the ISO standards for building materials in addition to, you know, concrete, wood and and brick and such and stone. And so containers are widely used now as new forms of construction material, right? So yes, this is one hundred percent, you know, foundational, it's it's built into the ground, but it does have that optionality if you wanted to.
All right, let's get give every trustee a chance to answer some ask some questions. Colin, did you have any questions? Yeah, well, we're going to open the public hearing, but right now we're going to ask our questions. Okay, Lonnie, do you have any questions of the applicant at this time?
Erica? Um, I think this gets a little bit to the traffic, but can you share what you would expect or what your hours of operation are?
Yeah, a hundred percent. So we would be operating for the full hours that are that are ultimately allowed by the by the city. You know, we we recently opened up a new location in Durango, Colorado, in a sort of actually a much more, it's it's kind of in like a Walmart shopping complex with restaurants around. So I think like, you know, an L shaped kind of strip mall. We're seeing on average there about ninety to a hundred visitors per day, customers per day. Now, that that is spread out over the course of the day, so that's very sort of nominal traffic. Many dispensaries throughout the state of Colorado, especially in like some of our municipal locations, will see on average closer like three hundred customers to three hundred and fifty per day. So this is a a much slower kind of trickle traffic throughout the the course of the day. My expectation is we would never exceed more than like fifty percent of the parking spaces that we currently have. But obviously, square footage mandates that that be the case. And, you know, to Yancy's point, I think that the the hours are off cycle from especially gas. If you think about the consumer in Colorado, traditionally in the morning, you know, you're filling up on gas, getting your Red Bull, grabbing your burrito, doing those sort of activities in the night, it's traditionally hitting more so the grocery store, right? And pick up the laundry or, you know, doing some of those activities which dispensaries have a tendency to fall into. So we traditionally see higher traffic hours from really six to six fifteen ish through, you know, really peak, the the peak drawdown, if you will, is around eight thirty. So different off off, you know, kind of traffic cycles than than, you know, we're not jamming at eight AM in the morning, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Erica? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to move to public hearing then.
I'd just like to say thank you for for your questions and and yeah, so.
Great, thanks. So I'll open the public hearing, I see that there's a couple of people here and there's some others online, so we'll monitor the Zoom. We'll start with people who are here in person. If you'd like to address the board on this application, please just step up to the dais. You have about three minutes, please address your comments to me and please start by stating your name. We're not going to get into dialogue with the applicant, so if you have any questions, you can ask me and then they can respond afterwards. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Paul Luttrell, Matt, nice to meet you finally. Sorry for my hastily written out concerns. Once again, I did not receive a notice of this hearing or this meeting. It was sent to nine eight five, Highway one thirty three, which is the address to RE/MAX and is addressed to Mike Kennedy. So he thought that was for him, assuming that I got a copy myself, but I'll I'll figure that out with the town eventually. You had a question about the intersection where the roundabout is. When I was a kid here in the seventies, there was nothing more there than just two stop signs for traffic going onto one thirty three. And the easement in question was granted to my father in nineteen eighty eight when he bought the property. So since then, I've kind of maintained it since the marketplace bought the property. Controlling traffic through there before it was just a free for all, anybody and everybody would just drive through there. It was never intended for an alternate route for the town. It's part of the original homestead from like nineteen hundred. Excuse my voice, I don't do well with public speaking.
You're doing great, we appreciate you.
So yeah, the the easement was granted in nineteen eighty eight when we bought the property and it carried over to me when I bought the property from the family trust. I'm not concerned about the development itself, I I encourage it because it will make that area look much nicer. My biggest concern is just the traffic coming off and on to one thirty three through both parking lots. It does get heavily congested, mostly in the morning, afternoon and early evening when people are coming and going to work. I have witnessed, I can't tell you how many accidents, they're minor accidents. When people come off of one thirty three, it needs to be controlled somehow so they realize when you turn off a highway, you need to turn ninety degrees, not coming at forty five degrees at thirty five miles an hour. That was my one concern. And you got somebody coming to their store, they turn in the congestion in the parking lot, even if you paint signs or stripes on the road, people don't pay attention to stripes, people don't stop at stop signs in this town, why are they going to worry? Why are they going to worry about stripes? I'm concerned that when traffic's congested in the parking lot, that that person getting to the shop. Is going to have to maneuver around parked vehicles, which will put in danger the people at Remax and the people that live in my building. And to myself, fortunately, I do utilize the right of way on a regular basis to exit and enter to my property. Um, if this does go through, maybe we can work with Matt and try to figure out a way to control traffic through there. After hours as well, maybe, because once the store shuts down, it will just be a place. It'll be a free for all for people to just drive through willy nilly for whatever reason. And that's a concern to myself. Um, but it sounds like we can probably do some negotiating. Other than that, I'm, I'm for it, just got a few concerns for public safety mainly, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thanks for sharing those with us, Paul. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Would anyone else here like to address the board?
Hello. Uh, my name's Chris Bryan, I live here in Carbondale, I also happen to be the applicant's attorney. Um, but I just want to make sure that everything is clear in this record. Um, the, the application before you complies with the code and it is for activation of a parcel that I think everyone acknowledges has some unique challenges. I think this is a really good, uh, proposal, I've lived here for, uh, ten years and I, I, I've always wondered what would happen to this parcel. I think this is a very good use for it and it's probably the best application you've seen in quite a while, and it might be the last one you see if you don't approve this. So I would, I would beg you to keep that in mind. Another thing I want to talk about, and this is more putting my lawyer hat on regarding this easement. Um, this is a reciprocal easement and it's for ingress and egress, if you look at the recorded document. There's not supposed to be any parking in the easement, in fact, it expressly says that, if you've read the easement. Um, uh, it, it says in the nineteen eighty, I've got the book and page number, Susan, if you need it. Um, it says no parking, so there might be other ways to address some of the concerns. That any, anybody in this room has about that, simply by making sure that the easement is being lawfully used and complied with. And I also want to point out that I don't think the applicant, uh, has any desire or intention of making. Coming off one thirty-three through, through the easement, the, the primary means of, of accessing this. Um, I don't think it's going to be highly advertised that that's, that's coming in here. I think, I think that's going to be something that is, that if you know about it, because it's, it's there in the back. Then you might be able to know that you can go there, but I think the hope is, is that the, the main street access point is, is used more. And one thing I want to be very clear about with that is, I think this applicant and its team has spent a lot of time making sure that this aligns with our. Values here in Carbondale of riding bikes and walking as much as possible. And I like the fact that they've tried to weave this in into what the larger comp plan says are our aims. And I think the twelve parking spots, that, that had to be done according to staff because of, of the code. But I also think that, that this applicant has worked very well within the code and with staff in trying to accommodate everything. And I think this easement issue can be very easily solved by looking at the actual document and enforcing its terms. And I was happy to hear that, that the, the neighbor sees some kind of collaboration to resolve this. But I would encourage you both as the applicant's lawyer, full disclosure, um, but also a, a citizen here and, and, and one of your constituents. I think this is a good project here, and I would say that even if, if I weren't their lawyer. Um, I, I am very pleased to see the way they've come about it and I would, uh, if I were sitting in your seat, I would vote for it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Anybody else?
Um, my name is Chelsea Brem and I, um, am here because I am a. A social work student right now in my master's program, so I was required to come to a meeting. And I find this, uh, application quite intriguing, especially the aspect of giving back to the community. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous too. Um, I really just want to hear more about some of, like, how do you do these after school activities, uh, for youth? I want to hear more about what you do for food insecurity, community cleanups. Um, how are you working with diversity and inclusion? Those are my big questions, I guess, um, thank you all.
Okay, thanks, Chelsea, we might go through the rest of the public comment and then if they want to address that, they'll have an opportunity. Couple online, okay, um, so who are we starting with? Okay, Pat, you can unmute and introduce yourself and address your comments to me, please.
Is it, am I on?
You're on.
Okay, uh, I've been sitting here coming up with some one liners, pardon me, but, uh. I have to ask, what are we smoking here? Uh, the, uh, this is probably the toughest site plan I've ever seen. And, uh, just. One aspect of this, I was over, went over to Ace Hardware on Sunday to get something. And as I pulled into West Main Street there, there was a line of cars all the way down West Main Street past Hendrick's. Trying to get into the roundabout, that's in the middle of a Sunday. Uh, if you've tried to drive in and out of the seven eleven gas station, I'm sorry, they didn't show the gas pumps there, which make it. You know, really interesting. Uh, trying to come out of the seven eleven onto West Main Street is really a problem. And, uh, then having another road that's going to come out on West Main Street between the seven eleven. And the Hendrick's Drive is just going to create havoc, in my view. And, uh, you know, in a larger sense. Uh, you know, this is something that's not talked about or hasn't been talked about, I don't think really, is. When somebody wants to do a new development in the community. It, it occurs to me that the community ought to ask themselves, is this something we really need? Is this something that has to go here? Uh, we've already got problems, as you know, uh, with affordable housing. Uh, this doesn't look like it's going to have a lot of employees, but, uh. Uh, where are these people going to live, for example? Is this developer planning on giving them a place to live? Uh, they're gonna live in Carbondale, are they gonna live down in Rifle, I mean, what's the, you know, what happens here? But the other thing is, we've already got how many different stores that are selling this product? And, uh, I just question whether or not a community wants to keep adding additional outlets for the same thing. Uh, and why don't we think about, you know, I, I've heard. One person after another tell us how difficult it was to create this, this plan. And, uh, there's probably a reason for that, because it's not a plan that you would normally find anywhere. So, uh, short term use, I mean, is that something that we really want to consider? Uh, you know, why not think about somebody who's actually planning on staying? And what, why don't we think about a, a business that is something that we don't have or something that we should have? Rather than something we've already got several of, because now this is just more competition for the existing businesses, it's going to make them harder to make a. Uh, you know, make, make their businesses work.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand now. About to close the public hearing and move on. Anybody else, anybody else here? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board, um, for discussion. Or was there anything, any of you wanted to respond to in any of those questions briefly?
Uh, I'm happy to respond to her questions if.
Sure, I mean, maybe keep it brief, because I.
Super brief, I understand, Mayor, um, so just really quickly, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, food scarcity, that's really been our biggest one for children, especially. So we give to blessings in the backpack, um, really that one is mainly treasure. Uh, in terms of the community cleanup, we do quarterly cleanups at all of our stores around each of the actual, uh, community engagement programs. Um, so, you know, take for example, four, four, six, uh, uh, location, we just did a Bachelor Gold's cleanup, uh, in town like, uh, four weeks ago, right? Um, in addition, uh, diversity inclusion, uh, actually, we, we, uh, brought in, uh, we, we, uh, started our diversity inclusion. Uh, committee about a year and a quarter ago, um, as a result, we actually, uh, shockingly, my, my wife and I, uh, like. I was raised by single women and, um, and found that there were pay equity gaps within our own business that I was shocked to discover. Um, also the, uh, inclusion issues that existed as well, so we really did a lot to rehab. Uh, we increased our D E I score from essentially a sixty-two to an eighty-seven in just a, a matter of like six months, which was pretty incredible. Uh, a lot of, uh, team member training as a result, both in person and online. Um, and then, you know, in terms of how we would do things here, I, I think just continue to resonate that, sorry, done, yeah.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
I can talk a lot, obviously.
Um, I have one question and then I'll, I'll try to focus our discussion in on the, the criteria and the findings and the, you know, conditions and all that stuff. And try to get us toward a decision pretty, uh, smoothly here, um. It sounds like a major concern of the Planning and Zoning Commission was bike and pedestrian access and orientation. Um, versus vehicular access, and because this parcel's owned by the same owner as everything to the west of it between there and Hendrick. I wonder if there's been any discussion of extending that sidewalk from Hendrick over to there, which will have to be done at some point. Because right now, you're building this nice, as we see on the screen there, this nice little sidewalk that connects to seven eleven parking lot. And then that wraps around to one thirty-three and our whole network, but then it's got this big gap to the west, um, but not a huge gap, actually, I, you know. Couple hundred feet, something like that, has there been any discussion of that, or is that something that, um, that the applicant has considered as enhancing the bike pedestrian orientation of this site? Because it is so constrained otherwise.
I'll try to answer your question, Ben, but I think it's been discussed even as part of the roundabout. And then, of course, the, um, Crystal Marketplace Lot One approval even then. Because that's probably more of a desire for having the sidewalk connected than this project. And, and I think working with Larry and then Kevin, both Public Works, the challenge is, is we put the sidewalk in, in. In, in a short term, we probably will put it in at the wrong grade, wrong location, and we have utility and infrastructure. So we end up hauling it to the dump, and so I think it all came to. What value were we getting versus what we were trying to do? That's about the only way, I, I mean, Janet kind of talked about it real briefly early on and we said, well, we're planning for it. We're putting in the right location from here to seven eleven, et cetera. But from there over to Hendrick's, we don't know necessarily where it needs to be and what infrastructure needs to be under it, because we don't even know what the uses are going to be.
Okay, thanks, are you familiar with any discussions around that at staff level, I don't expect you to be, but.
I, I, I'm not, but I can, I can certainly appreciate where Yancy's coming from, um, you know, I think there. There is some challenges with building a sidewalk and not knowing what the future development is going to need.
Yeah, okay. Um, let's try to hone in on, uh, deliberation then, um, unless there's any further questions, I think it's time for us to start talking about this and making a decision.
I just want to clarify a question on something. Okay, so there's access via the easement of one thirty-three. To where the, between Remax and seven eleven, there's that easement that goes through. Is there also access from Wa- West Main Street to the parking lot, in the back of the building?
Yes, it's all the same easement.
Okay.
It's twenty feet from West Main Street to one thirty-three.
And the question is, so you could come out either way, correct?
Correct.
If you came out onto Main Street, and this may be to you. Has Public Works said anything about putting up like a no left turn sign? Because I could see that being a major, uh, traffic headache to try to make a left out of there. With all the traffic on Main coming into the roundabout.
We, we did and we agree with you, um, we don't think that's appropriate for left-hand turns out of there, so.
Okay.
You know, it's not an improved, um, drive, and so I think that's going to keep most people away from using that. As a egress and ingress, uh, point for this property. But, um, you know, I think there could be a benefit to putting up a sign that.
Okay, uh, I have one last thing, then, then I'm done. What was, um. The concerns about the landscaping? Did I see something on that from P N C?
Can you ask that question again?
Were the concerns from P N C about the landscaping design?
No, they were, uh, supportive of the landscaping design, I don't think it was as fully vetted as, um, the recent submittal. But they were supportive of the concept and the alternative, uh, not the alternative compliance, the, um. The, the location of, of the landscape in the above and beyond the minimum requirements.
That's all, thank you.
Um, based on this plan, is this, are you proposing to, um, concrete? Line this random parking space off to the west with a curb all the way around it?
Um, no, we were going to have it just blend right into the landscape.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, Colin.
Um, sorry if I missed this, so the easement will be only paved to the parking area behind. The store, or will it be paved all the way to West Main?
Our proposal is to leave it unpaved.
Okay.
Um, and leave it, the gravel there, so people can use it, but not from our s- place. And I think Public Works agrees, we don't necessarily want to entice people to use that as a primary. Because of, of the way they would have to exit to get north on one thirty-three.
Yeah, yeah. I mean. It's a nice proposal, it seems like they've met all the, uh, guidelines that Jared has brought up. It addresses a lot of the issues that P N C brought up, you know, an alternative compliance. This, the access and egress just really bugs me, so. People come in, they're going way too fast, and you're going to have people coming out at the same time. And I'm just wondering, is there a way to? One way that easement? So you come in off one thirty-three, but you come out on West and you can't make a left-hand turn. And you go back through Hendrick and back onto one thirty-three, I know it's roundabout, but. I've just, people are going to come out of that parking lot, they're going to turn and people are going to be coming in off. I know it's not going to be at eight o'clock in the morning, but it's not, we're trying to fit. A nice project through something that's been there a long time and actually doesn't work all that well. I mean, your comment about people not being able to make a left out of seven eleven to get on the roundabout, people do that all the time. Right, they cut right in front, you're driving to the roundabout and all of a sudden someone comes in, seven eleven, you're like, what the heck? Um, so I don't, everything about this is, seems fine and the way it's been addressed, but that whole issue of people coming in, going out. Round by that roundabout just seems like a disaster waiting to happen and, and if we do have an easement. And there could be some agreement about how to use it, could we have people come in, get their product and then they go out and around? As opposed to turning around and going right back into a, a busy gas station.
I have one more question along those lines, is there any other parties besides Mr. Luttrell? Who are party to this easement who would need to be roped into a change to it?
From my evaluation and stuff is, I believe, seven eleven. And I have to say, from where I'm sitting, that's been a challenge, because we've tried to reach out to their corporate office many times. Because I believe they're taking advantage and, and they're the, more of the issue. And I have to say what the town and C dot did with an existing seven eleven and, and making it work for their access. It's just that the seven eleven development, the way it is, is the problem. Uh, it's not our traffic and, and, you know, the seven eleven traffic is, we're going to be way less than ten percent. Of what the seven eleven does on a peak time, so. I can't, because some of the easements on seven eleven's lot, I mean, if we could only have them one curb cut. And then it was a twenty foot, but I don't know how seven eleven would react and function. So to answer your question, I think it's a complicated easement that has a lot of challenges to amend it too much.
But you can, you've been able to actually like get a response for them, it's not like a total blank wall that you.
No, we have not been able to get a response from seven eleven corporate office.
So, and you can't move forward unless you have that, uh, an ability to communicate with them in some way.
Well, no, we, we have the right to use the easement, the same as, as Paul does and use it, but we. To put curb along it on the seven eleven to, to try to redefine it and et cetera, we, we would have to have their permission. I believe to some level, but we could definitely enforce no parking within that twenty feet, because it's in the easement.
And how about the segment of the easement that is, you know, so I'm, I mean, I know that's not ideal, but I guess I'm. And how about the segment of the easement that is, you know, so I'm, I mean, I know that's not ideal, but I guess I'm more interested in this whole segment of the easement that is to the west of the property. And to me, the logical thing is is ideally what he's said, doing a one-way in off of the one thirty-three and having that continue through to Hendrick Drive on a direct one-way thing, so you can come in that way and go out the other way and come back out the Hendrick Drive way. And in my my mind, that's only a, it's almost entirely a discussion of between Briston and himself and you guys, because it's almost entirely on a property of one. There's a tiny bit of Mr. Luttrell's property involved in that. But to me, that would seem to solve the issue from a, from a, from a, you know, traffic standpoint.
I'm not sure, because all you would do is change some of the traffic to Hendrick's versus Main Street.
Yeah, but at least you're not, at least you're, you know, you're coming into Hendrick in a sort of a more rational intersection that's got a certain amount of space on either side of it. And, you know, so people have a time time to turn and not engage with other intersections for a certain amount of distance before they.
I must be misunderstanding. I thought you said one-way from one thirty-three.
Well, maybe, but I I mean, maybe, maybe not one three, maybe not one-way, but but potentially, potentially just changing that end of the easement so that it's, to me, this is just completely unworkable in the long run of this this thing coming out into the middle of between Hendrick Drive and your proposed project. And I can't imagine a future, future board supporting a project that follows this existing alignment. And I would assume it would be in the interest of of the long-term interest as well of of the landlord to potentially consider moving that easement so that it just connects to their interior street, you know?
Yeah, maybe I wasn't very clear. That's why I mentioned early on that Briston and I have talked about that, and we've actually talked to previous Public Works and Janet that way back before we even built Hendrick's that we envisioned a connection off of Hendrick's going into this parcel, and we would hope it would go on the way out, connect to this easement to one thirty-three for the benefit of seven eleven and the Remax. Now, if seven eleven redeveloped, then that would be an interesting discussion because C dot controls that access off of one thirty-three and and they're going to be involved with that. So, so I agree, but short term, I don't think it makes any difference for this use. But if Briston came in with a development on the western parcel and probably remaster plan this lot with it, then I would think he would propose something off Hendrick's or the town would require it.
Great. Let's let's hear from others. Erica.
Um, so I am in agreement. I think this project can work in this spot. I don't think we can decide on an approval on that entrance in the easement, because I do think it it seven eleven customers are the influence on that, like this is a minor amount of traffic for what's coming in off of Highway one thirty-three and going out. And so I do think it will be, if that ever gets redeveloped or seven eleven ever comes and talks to us, that's the opportunity to fix that intersection. So as we can talk about it, or if you guys end up having conversations with seven eleven to improve it, I agree with Paul. I've seen people come just flying in and they're going diagonal, but those are seven eleven customers. People are going to have to make a right turn to get to this parking lot. And I'm glad there's the existing trees that are going to stay, because I think that helps provide some good delineation and just some green greenery and a very, not very green space. So I think that would have to be a solution that we resolve during some other approval process. Otherwise, I think, I don't think I would put it as a condition of approval, but I would definitely want you guys to work with the Remax building. Sounds like they're responsive and Mr. Luttrell so that we, if it is some some lines that would help or some sort of delineation to help folks know where to go to get to your property without the big signage or something, I think that would be great, and it would benefit that whole parking lot, frankly. Or parking slash easement, however people feel like using it during the day.
Okay, thanks, Erica. We'll keep the discussion going here. I mean, it sounds like the access will continue to be a discussion. I visited the site today. I hope others visited because it's really interesting to go and actually drive in there. I found it quite easy to to drive in there. That was right before a meeting, so five thirty kind of rush. And I hadn't really been to that back area before, but I kind of agree that I I don't love this access, but the fact that it's temporary and the fact that it's a really small amount of car traffic to these dispensaries, they just don't have parking lots full of cars if you sort of look around town at any time, really. It it doesn't concern me as much as it would if it was some other use, you know, a daycare or something like that with a big flood of people all at once. I might just focus this in on the what they're asking. So, you know, people have a use by right under zoning. If they're just sticking with the zoning and then we get involved if they're asking for anything outside of that. So on page thirty-seven, the review criteria in our packet, the alternative compliance, just to be really clear, that's just about moving the landscaping out of the parking strips to the side of the building and increasing the percentage. So when it comes time for a vote, that's what we're considering there. The site plan is due to, and Jared, keep me honest here, due to the, just the size of the development was staff recommended a site plan review. Is that right?
Correct.
Um, and then the conditional use permit is the fact that it's being done in a zone district where it's a existing non-conforming use, so the lot size doesn't meet the normal criteria. So those are the things I just want to make sure that we focus in on as we discuss and hopefully get close to decision year. So any other thoughts on those issues or any of the other issues that have arisen, the things that I'm writing down? If we end up with a motion at some point that may be additional conditions or that condition number four be updated to say that the Main Street entrance must be open to the public at all times, that the business is operational? And that, I I don't know exactly how to word this, but some sort of improvements to clarify the parking location and the roadway location on the entrance to work with staff on that. So those are the two things that I'm noting so far. Other comments from trustees? Yeah.
A quick question and comment. Talking on the back, is that going to be lit twenty-four seven?
The parking lot? Well, we would hope it'd only be parked during the business hours of the facility.
Well, my concern is you can, you're creating a dead space there where people who are up to nefarious activities could hide from public view.
So I think what I would want to do is is work with Luttrell and the others. What I wouldn't want to do is keep them up all night, but at the same time.
Don't want you to keep anyone up all night.
So if it was motion sensor activity, for example, that would, you know, create some light and and bring notice to that area so as to prevent people from from doing that, we'd be a hundred percent on board with that. And I think the the only reason that I hesitated is just because I'm not familiar with what the lighting requirements are overnight. So if the lighting requirements were, hey, you have to have light on all night, well, then it's pretty simple, right? But absolutely, we would be happy to, you know, and frankly, from a safety and security perspective, right? It's it's a benefit to us net. So a hundred percent would want to work and just make sure that we were being good neighbors.
Okay, no, that that's fine.
Yeah.
I just don't want to see creating a black space there
Completely aligned.
where people who are up to no good can just hang out and be as public eye.
Absolutely. And seven eleven can sometimes have a tendency to draw that in.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts? Or a motion, somebody could move to approve, to deny, or to continue. And there's a recommended motion from staff. What page?
I'm ready to do it.
I guess I would, what would make me, I I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I think, and I sort of am wanting to try to figure out how to make this work, but I, what would what would make it palatable to me would be just a little bit more clarity about this this easement and potentially you know, for the temporary purposes, what I would ideally like to see would be a curb cut in this Hendrick Drive and a temporary one-way out of this parking lot to Hendrick Drive for customers so that they wouldn't be coming back into this whole situation at the at the gas station for for public safety. That would be the one thing. And then the second thing I would would recommend would be eliminating this random parking space and and allowing the town to give a half of a parking space as a parallel parking space off of West Main Street that could allow for somebody to park in sort of more of a quick manner and not, you know, because you could conceivably imagine quite a bit of traffic could be alleviated that way if people could sort of almost a pick-up drop-off scenario where people could literally be coming, going home or whatever and come out of the roundabout, go to a parallel parking space, park, run inside, keep going on their merry way. And that's one car that doesn't doesn't have, instead of that, you have, you know, one, two, three, three complicated intersections for a car to man navigate in each instance.
I don't agree with a parallel parking right there on the street. I mean, I bike that all the time, and it is really tight. And there is no, with no existing sidewalk, and I wouldn't want to bike on a sidewalk anyway. I just, to me, that would feel really unsafe. So I don't agree, agree with you on that. And I don't feel like we can require access through a different lot, through a different property that we're not reviewing right now. That's not under their control. I think it's a good idea in the future. And but I I wouldn't feel comfortable adding that requirement, either one of those.
Yeah, I guess I'm just sort of resentful that the so much onus has been put on this applicant to torture their site plan to make this work when some simple concessions from the land, you know, property owner to to simplify the the lines of this property and make it a more, you know, reasonable reasonable piece of property could make this work, I think, a lot more logically. And I think that personally, I I think it could take just one more round of negotiating with the neighbor and thinking about the long-term. You know, they, we've talked about how there's the tendency of the temporary to become permanent, and I think it's kind of foolish to think that this thing is a part of a temporary measure. I think there's very likelihood, there's a high, high likelihood we have this thing for twenty years. And so then we have a twenty-year temporary solution to something. And that would be less than ideal for me.
It's Chris. Any other thoughts of our motion? Move to approve, deny, or continue?
Um, I'm ready to make a motion. I would move to approve a minor site plan review for the construction of a two thousand four hundred square foot building at thirteen thirty-seven County Road one oh six and to approve the alternative compliance request from section five four three C of the United Unified Development Code and to approve the conditional use permit with the following conditions and findings. Adding to the conditions, sorry, number four.
The the Main Street entrance must be open whenever the business is open to the public.
But the Main Street entrance to the building must be accessible whenever the business is open.
And some improvements worked out with staff to clarify the location of the driving entrance and the parking location.
And some improvements worked out with town staff for location of the parking.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Erica, second by Lonnie. Can you discuss them before we do a roll call vote?
Could we also include the lighting of the parking in the back?
How would you like to word that, Marty?
Applicant agrees to in compliance with town lighting rules, provide lighting for the parking lot in the back on a twenty-four seven basis, whether through motion sensors or whatever.
Okay. Do you have any concerns about that, Jim?
Yeah, so that that directly conflicts with our development code that requires parking lot lighting to turn off no more than one-half of fixtures one hour after closing the active use or nine P M, whichever is later, and then requires some dimming systems to reduce light levels by more than fifty percent.
That's fine.
So I would.
Our existing code.
Yeah, so so that they'll have to, they'll have to comply with that section.
Then I'm fine with it.
And it's our night sky compliant lighting code, which our community feels really strongly about.
So to be really clear for the motion, then, the motion is not adding a condition about lighting. Okay, thanks, though, Marty, for bringing that up. Motion was from Erica to approve. Second was from Lonnie. Kathy, can you do a roll call vote, please? Yes.
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 Chris Hossid.
No.
Yes.
Bonnie Kitchen.
Okay, motion passes five votes in favor and one against. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for a long process. Thanks, staff, for a complicated one. Thanks, neighbors and public for coming out and helping us get to a good decision. And thanks, Chris, for all your concerns.
Yeah, and I I still am excited to see you be in the community, and I think I think it will be on the whole a good project and. Great.
Thanks. Let's take about a eight-minute break. Then we'll talk about the budget. Actually.
Oh, this was.
You know, every. Yeah, I'm curious. What would have happened? Are you Mark's?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
All right.
I thought the baby part was. Anyway, it's great to see you. Yeah, the previous one with the landscape. I'm sure we'll talk more about some of those conditions.
Yeah.
For formalizing the changes.
Yes. Yes, yeah, sorry.
Mark, Mark gave me a little sign. Well, Mary was in, for the longest time, Mary was there.
What are you doing?
Okay.
Which was a young attorney.
Okay.
And they had a lawyer house.
Okay.
I got all these passes to one way adventure.
Oh, all right.
You may go up there Saturday to have an October fest. Sunday.
Oh, cool, Sunday.
And Carbondale trivia.
Okay, that'll be fun.
Hi, I'm Christie, finance director. Nice to meet you too. We're doing budget stuff. That's okay.
And we're gonna benefit a whole lot more. I mean, now you can bike down, bike down. Speed down the bike, I mean, but it's a lot closer to Carbondale, so it's a lot more accessible. Yeah.
That way the parents who are working, the kids can go there after school and then the parents pick them up from there.
Yeah.
When it's open.
Yeah. Yeah. We met at the K D N K board meeting a while back. Good to meet you again.
I, I, I don't think I ever told you this, but I have one of your pieces of art in my living.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I bought it at a fundraiser. It was like a silent auction item or something.
Stanley bells?
Yeah, that might have been it.
Nice, yeah, that's a, that's a nice little piece.
It's great. It's like right over my bar.
Yeah, you got a screaming deal on that thing. Cause he thought, he thought it was a print and it was a drawing.
I, I know, I know. That's why I wanted to tell you it's in good hands. I appreciate and value it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm glad you have it. Good to see you.
Okay, let's get to the fun part.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, exactly.
Found us money.
Yeah, no, I told her she found us money, whatever she wants.
Wait, tell me where she.
Yeah, it's everywhere. Well, and, and we've got a balanced budget on a recurring basis, so.
Well, yeah, I mean,
Yeah.
That's a, that's a tradition we wanted to keep alive.
That makes sense to me.
We'll never work in the federal government.
Well, we just, uh, they, they call quantitative easing something that we call, you know, that's a little bit more fraudulent than that. When people print money, they're not.
What we've been doing the last hundred years or so?
Yes, right, exactly. Yeah, the gold standard, I think, was way in seventy-three.
Yeah, you zoom out far enough, it's all on these schemes.
All right, it looks like we're all back. Um, I think we're actually gonna still adjourn on time because we're, we have a good budget process ahead of us. Lauren and Christie are gonna share some things with us. I might just frame it a little bit. Um, by saying, first of all, thank you both for, I know that's been an enormous amount of work to put this together and get it to us by today's deadline. Um, it's, it's clear. Um, there's a lot of encouraging stuff in here. Um, I think we, we've managed things really well as a town for quite a while. And uh, and I look forward to going through this process. Um, I also look forward to kind of fresh eyes on the process itself. And I know that you both have some, um, you know, updates, revisions, changes to that process that we can discuss. So in my mind, our goal as a board tonight is not to get into every line item. It's to get a broad overview. Where are we? What are the key decisions that staff needs us to make and needs to, us to give feedback on? Um, and what are the next steps gonna look like? So Lauren will talk about the two on two concept and we got an invite for that today. Um, and so we'll, and we'll talk about which departments do we want to bring back. So we're not just gonna go through every line item if we don't have a lot of questions about it. So I'll leave it at that and hand it over to Lauren Christie. I'm sure you have a plan for, who says what.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to just start by saying that, um, apparently I'm not skilled at doodle polls. So, um, you may have gotten multiple doodle poll requests today. Please respond to the one that was slightly before four o'clock this afternoon. Um, I made the mistake of, on the first one. Addressing it to the, to the distribution list and that did not work.
Alright.
So, um, so we'll, we'll talk shortly about the, the two on twos. Um, as you're well aware, all of you, um, twenty twenty-two has been a, a year of transitions. Um, starting with my hire and continuing on with the pretty big churn that we've had in staffing. We've also had a lot of, um, uh, challenges with supply chain issues. Um, not being able to spend ARPA money because we had the money, but we couldn't get the parts. All of those things and also increased costs due to inflation. Um, so Christie's new here, I'm new here. Uh, this is our first budget with Carbondale. Although between us, we have about twenty-seven years of municipal budgets. Um, so we have done a lot of work. Thank you to Christie. She spent a lot of extra hours just with the, you know, almost no staff, people walking out the door on a daily basis. Um, spent a lot of weekend hours and I really appreciate everything that you've done, Christie. Um, but we feel that this budget is a solid work project, a product, and we are happy to present it um, to the board. I want to talk about a couple of things. Um, before we get into what's in the memo and in the budget. The first thing is process. I know, Ben, you just mentioned um, which department heads the board is going to want to be invited to come to the work session next Tuesday. I think some of the department's budgets are very, very straightforward. There are others that are more complicated and the board may want uh, direct, um, more of a, more direct interaction with the department head to ask questions in utilities or public works or police or what have you. Um, in the past, everybody has sort of been invited um, to come, but we just brought them or you just brought them before you with our goals and objectives. And many departments went through a very, very detailed description of what's coming in two thousand twenty-three and what they're, they're intending to budget for. So I will leave that up to you, but hopefully by the end of the meeting today, you can give me an idea. Or tomorrow morning and we will invite those department heads to come next week. Um, um, also what Christie and I are doing are, um, inviting all of the trustees to do what we're calling two on twos, Christie, myself and two trustees, although one of those meetings will be three trustees. Um, to really sit down in the conference room here and open up the budget and just say, what do you have questions on? What? If you want to get in the weeds, this is the time to get in the weeds. If we see that multiple people have the same question, then we'll bring it back to the next board meeting and address it. So that everybody gets filled in on that. But I think that that will streamline the process and save a lot of time um, at the board meetings themselves. Um, just getting clarity and being able to get the questions from you. Um, and have the face-to-face discussions about a particular line item or what have you. So that's what that doodle poll was about. Um, reporting, what we reported in this budget is slightly different. Um, the, the reports themselves are slightly different than past reports. Uh, we saw that many of the reports that had been in previous years' initial budgets were a little bit duplicative. They, you know, there were repeats, there were, there was some information that might not have been easily digested. And so we gave you what we gave you and if there's something that you liked from what you had had before, or you would like us to get information, do a chart on something or some sort of graph, we're happy to do that. Just let us know. If there's something, some piece of information that you feel is missing. Um, so uh, in a minute, we'll, we'll go through the memo. I hope you've had all, uh, all had time to read it. Um, but just as an overview, the memo that um, accompanied the budget includes all major work items, including capital needs. Um, what we're calling the multimodal mobility and access plan, which um, has been previously known as the transportation master plan. But the reason that we're calling it that is because that's what it's called. That's what that section of the comp plan is called. Um, so in order to make sure that they parallel each other, um, we use, are using that name. Um, a capital need study, staffing needs and salary study estimates. Continuation of utilities department upgrades. A lot of that is um, through the ARPA funding. The Crystal River Restoration Project, the Eighth Street Project Completion, the start of the construction for the new pool. The Bike Share Program, Employee Handbook Update, Vehicle and Equipment Replacements and more. What is not included in this initial budget for various reasons are the following items. Um, one of the vehicles that the Police Department had initially requested along with the two additional SROs. Those three things are not in this budget and we have had multiple conversations with Police Chief um, about why. Um, the E Board has put in a budget request. Part of it is in this budget. The piece that is not in this budget is that they requested thirty-five hundred dollars specifically for a demonstration zero scape project. Which um, I've talked to the mayor about and I've talked to the E Board about. And if the, if that's something that the board wants to make a priority, we can certainly put it in. Um, but because we just had that conversation about um, what the board wants to do about uh, pushing uh, water conservation and zero escaping and whether that belongs in the utilities budget or the E Board's budget or what have you. I did not include it in these numbers. Um, and then there was a request from the CHPC, apparently in July. Uh, a budget request that uh, never made it past John Layborn's desk and so it didn't get to Christie and myself. Um, uh, to be included in this budget and we just found out about it two days ago. So that's, I'm sure there'll be lots of ins and outs, small things.
Um, what was that?
The, the um, Historic Preservation Commissioner. I don't know anything about it. I haven't even seen it yet.
Okay.
So we will definitely um, be reporting back on that, but I did want you to know that it's not in here. Um, we've met with all the department heads, discussed everybody's schedules. We've tried to give you as much meaningful information that provides, you know, as much additional clarity um, as necessary or where necessary. Um, and we think again that this is a good budget. Um, we've done a lot of talking this year, the board has about um, fund balances. Um, I will just tell you, for example, a, a couple of basic things that are in this budget. Um, that you may or may not have noticed. The first thing is that the fund balance that was budgeted for twenty twenty-one was lower because the board made a decision to allow that um, to be a lower number because of the purchase of the co-op building. Um, so the budgeted twenty twenty-one fund balance was sixty-six percent. Um, the proposed twenty twenty-two fund balance, based on what we know to date, the fund balance is a hundred percent. Um, that is primarily, we have a lot of, um, uh, there's part of it's sales tax. Um, a lot of it is fees. Um, the building fees and, and those kinds of things. Um, in the new budget, we go from the proposed twenty twenty-two end of year budget of a hundred percent to eighty-four percent. Um, and what we're doing with that is, um, and we'll talk about that in the, in the other memo. But that is a um, a substantial one-time pay down for some one-time projects. Um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Christie, but that most of that represents um, the uh, Eighth Street Project and the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar street sweeper. Um, or Public Works. Um, we did discover that the trash fund has been running at a deficit. Um, talked to uh, Kevin. He was aware of that. I know that when we went to this single hauler trash, it was expected that the trash fund would run at a deficit for a few years, kind of like starting a new business that you don't always make a profit or even break even your first few years. But we've discovered that it is heading the wrong direction. So, um, one of the things that is in this budget is an increase in our administrative fee. Um, related to trash from seventeen and a half percent to twenty percent to help reverse that. Um, it, it'll still take several years to get it to break even, but at least it will have it running in the right direction.
What would that mean for a typical homeowner? I mean, it's only three percent, so.
Very small. It was like, for some people, it was seventy-five cents or something.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay.
It's not a large number.
That's a percentage of what the hauler is charging to, on top of the.
That to cover our costs, right.
And our costs are our employee, right? That's the person who's managing all the accounts. I was trying to think of why we said that and I don't know if anybody who was on the board then remembers it, but I know it was really clear that we were gonna start at a deficit and I don't know, it's because we had an upfront cost of the containers that might have been it, that we had to spend and then we're.
Yeah, it was, it was the containers. It was, um, we cut people some slack on if they were overfilling the containers for a couple of months because there was some confusion.
Remember why we knew that there was a, a deficit in the first years that was gonna kind of steer step up to balance, but anyway, okay.
Yeah, three percent, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah. The cost of transporting the, the trash.
Trash, right, which was built into the contract.
Right, cause that's all kind of a pass through essentially.
Yeah, that's just passed through to the customer, but anyway.
Our costs are just administrative, basically.
Right, because. Um, when are we gonna get the salary survey? Do you know?
Can, can you hold on that for a few minutes?
Well, I will. I just saw you put a number in there that.
We did put a number in there and I, I will speak to that.
Okay, that's fine.
And.
I can be patient occasionally.
Very shortly, I'll speak to that. Thank you.
Other thing about the trash fund is that, um, the way that it was calculated, and it took me a while to get my head wrapped around it. Is it's based upon the trash fee that's charged to us from mountain waste and we keep, used to keep seventeen and a half percent. And we're moving that up to twenty percent. So, um, that's, and then what that's gonna do is over, like Lauren said, over the next five years or so. It's gonna re- reduce our deficit to zero for our beginning fund balance so that we'll get that. We'll shore the fund up and it will cost people, um, a little bit of additional funding, but, um, but it's needed for the, the fund. Yeah.
It's a lot less than whatever increases they'd be seeing if it was still a free market. I can say that because that was going up all the time.
That's a good point. Um.
And is that equal between recycling and trash? It's sort of, there's no difference, right?
No, you, you pay one fee.
Yeah. I think part of, what, what, the way Kevin explained it to me briefly is that at the very beginning when we were calculating our fees, we had to guess what people were gonna choose for their size of their cans. And some of that was accurate and some of it was not. So that set us off more than, you know, we had expected. Um, so in this budget, um, right now revenues are up one point five million dollars over budget. Um, so right now our actuals are up one point five million dollars. Um, we have estimated for our twenty twenty-two projection that by the end of the year will be up thirteen percent. But right now we're still running at eighteen percent, but it has been coming down a little bit all year. It started, yeah, the beginning of the year for, um, it was twenty to thirty percent.
Yeah, a little over.
And then it's been inching down. So, um, and then expenditures for twenty twenty-two are down three hundred thousand dollars over budget. The budgeted number, um, a lot of that is due to the need to move those expenses into twenty twenty-three for things that we can't get. We can't, we haven't been able to get the commuter van. We haven't been able to get a police car. We have, those things will all end up being paid for out of twenty twenty-three. Um, also, we've have had some savings in expenditures because we've had staff vacancies as well. Um, some of our funds that you may see on, um, on these documents are, um, showing deficits. I can explain what those are for the most part. Um, Christie understands it better than I do. The water fund deficit is very large.
Do you want to point us to any particular page so that we track you? Yeah.
Okay, so.
And if you're not doing it that way, that's okay. I just. Trying to follow, I think.
One fifty-five, maybe?
This, this page?
Attachment G.
I don't know what page it is because I don't.
It's one twenty-five, one seventy-eight on the handout.
Okay.
Attachment G.
Thanks, Ben. Oh, thank you, Christie, for posting. Oh, thank you, Christie, for posting. It's up on the screen too.
Yep, it's on the screen here, page one twenty three.
Move this over. Not sure they're in the right order. They, you'll see that um. The water fund. Shows almost a one point five million dollar deficit. And the balance, and the, on the balance change. That is where Christine and I are working to reconcile. The ARPA funds and some other factors that may be in there. We will have more information about that. That's the one piece, I think, in this budget. That we don't have complete clarity on right now. Um, so more will come back to us on that. The capital construction fund that shows a four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar deficit. Um, that is primarily uh the two hundred thousand dollars that is being um. Used towards the Crystal River Restoration Project. And then additional carryover of a hundred and ninety thousand. For roundabout planning for the new roundabout. That's carried over from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. All these are one-time, one-time expenses. And then the, the other big one is the recreation fund, Recreation Tax Fund. And that is primarily um due to the um, the pool. Um, reflects five point two million dollars spending for the pool. Um, because we have the money from the, from the um, bond. Um, and that is uh due to be spent. About two thirds of it spent in twenty twenty three. There's some Crystal River uh Restoration Money in there. Um, but the ending fund balance after that money is spent. Is still two point two five million, which is the same fund balance as it was the end of twenty twenty one. So the actual fund balance remains status, static. But the numbers make it, because of the bond money and the spending on the pool, make it look quite different. So I wanted to make sure that that wasn't too confusing for people. Christie, do you have anything else to add on, on those numbers?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is on the bottom, just to note is that we'll always put like a reconciliation of why we do not have a recurring deficit. What we're calling is one-time monies, just so it's, it's always in the report very clear. On what um, what that looks like. And, and the biggest one is, is Lauren indicated is the transfer out to the capital fund, which. We're saying, we believe this about six hundred thousand from everything we know right now is our recurring. Amount that we're gonna have to utilize in capital um, year over year and the remainder of that is, is things like for. The Eighth Street Project that are, that are one-time funding that we're not gonna be spending that kind of money all, every year. So that's the why there.
I mean, I think. Ask the question and maybe we can say, let's talk about that on a smaller basis.
I think I'm getting in the weeds too quickly, but like on the water fund, I know there's a four hundred thousand dollars for a pumpback system for the. Um, that serves like twelve customers outside of the town that are not constituents of the town. What is our actual obligation to those customers to give them permanent emergency?
I don't think we can answer that right now.
Yeah, let's hold that. We can explain the history of that. It's got a long history.
It's longer than my knowledge, so sorry, Chris. Um, so um, lastly, before we really get into the memo, um, the questions for this meeting. Um, and some things that Christie and I will need to know to be able to figure out what needs to go where in this budget. The. When Eric gave his park and recreation goals and objectives report. There was a lot of conversation about looking for an extra two hundred thousand dollars. For matching money so that we could get additional grant money and, and try to fully fund that project. Um, at that time, he said that. He had, was putting two hundred thousand dollars into the budget for the replacement of the Gina Netti bathrooms. Um, but if the board decided that they um. Would. Could wait a year on the Gina Netti bathrooms and wanted to use that two hundred thousand dollars. Towards the Crystal River Restoration Matching Money, um, that was a possibility. Um, we did not add that two hundred thousand dollars to this budget. Um, anywhere except that it is in the, it's in Park and Rec. Uh, budget for bathroom replacements. Um, and I think that what we would like the board to decide, whether it's tonight or another night is. Would you like to add two hundred thousand dollars? In matching money and if so. Um, do you want to try to take it from something that's already in the budget or do you want to take it from uh fund balance numbers? Um, so, and I do have some numbers as to what that would do to the percentage, so, but for right now. I think that's just put out there as a question. Uh, just to let you know, this isn't a question, but we're still working on the ARPA detail and reporting. So in this budget, the twenty twenty three sales tax estimate is budgeted at three percent. So a three percent increase in sales tax. This makes sense because we're building off of a twenty twenty two very conservative number. But the question is, is the board gonna be comfortable with that as a number? All of our peers, probably how many ten different towns we polled are um estimating somewhere between two and four, two and five percent. Um, none of them are budgeting as if the sky is falling. However, we do also have. Numbers for what it would mean if the board wasn't comfortable at three percent and wanted to, to um, to budget at a flat. Sales tax rate. So that's, that's gonna be a question. Right now we have a three percent increase in our sales tax for twenty twenty three.
And can I clarify, is that a three percent increase on what we actually collected this year or what we had budgeted to collect?
This is based off the twenty twenty two projected amount, which is uh thirteen percent above our twenty twenty one number.
Okay, because we didn't budget for that. We didn't forecast that this year. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's three percent over actual.
Right, and we're currently running about eighteen percent, you know, year to year, right, year to date right now, so.
From twenty twenty two to twenty twenty one, running eighteen percent currently.
Year to date, yeah. But it is kind of starting to level off as Lauren indicated, yeah.
And I guess this is a philosophical question. Budgeing it for three percent over a twenty twenty two final. With inflation running, I won't even say nine or ten percent. Let's say at five or six percent. Then I would suggest our sales tax would continue to increase more than three percent. Three percent is a very conservative number.
I would imagine so. Uh, you know, I had an interesting conversation with uh C-Safe today. Bob Krug, Krug stopped by if you know him, knew him and.
Tell us what C-Safe is.
Uh, oh, Colorado Surplus uh Asset uh Fund, uh C-Safe. What that means. That's one of the, the organizations that um is a nonprofit that we have some of our funding with. Um, for money market.
Okay, it's like a bank for us.
It's a bank, yes. Yeah, so I was trying to think of the acronym, but anyway. Yeah, so no, um, anyway, they. I mean, what he indicated is similar to what you just said, Marty, is just, we're looking at somewhat of a stagflationary economy with the high potential. Potential for a recession, so you're looking at it going like this and like this. At the same time, and they're, they're looking at a um. So he's considering a mild recession is what he's saying right now. So, you know, we believe three percent is conservative, given how inflation's running.
And just uh, just because we haven't dealt with each other before. If we see the numbers. At the, after the first six months of the year that we're running at, say, ten percent above. Then that gives us more flexibility if we need it, right?
Correct. I mean, because then you're, I mean, in essence, when you have inflation that continues to escalate that like that, you're gonna have cost increases on all these. Projects that you've just budgeted. And you know, then you're gonna have other pressures on your salary and benefits budget again and, and things like that, or we have another conversation potentially.
But, okay. I'll be patient.
So then, then in the situation like a two thousand nine situation, there probably was a mid-year meeting and there was some readjustment. Of the budget at, at a mid-year point potentially.
You know, and it was interesting when Bob and I were talking about that um today, it's almost like there's no need for a bubble readjustment now. It's almost like. The, the reason for the increase in the real estate market is because of inflation is really what the market's saying that it's, it's about. So um, it's, it's a different economy than two thousand nine.
But I think to answer your question. We, you know, we always will be looking at the financials and we'll either be saying like, oh, we projected conservative and we're making a lot, we have a lot more funds, therefore. The cost for Eighth Street comes in at two hundred thousand dollar more, we could then pay for that. Or if it is less, then we look to staff and we're like, okay, I guess what projects are we not doing?
Or like if we don't do the Gina Netti bathrooms, we don't budget for that. And we're coming in high, hey, we have the money we could allocate for this. We may not do it right now. But no. In July, maybe we can do it.
I'd say in my time on the board, we haven't done a lot of mid-year. Adjustments, we've just let the fund balance end up, kind of like we are right now, right? And we're saying, oh my gosh, we have one point five million dollars more than we thought we would have in the fund balance at the end. And now we can see, you know, what are we gonna do with that?
But like last year when we were able to adjust the employees salaries. That's because. Our sales tax numbers were much better than what we had budgeted for. So that we could say, okay, uh. We could shock Jay and say, when he asked for a five percent increase, we were able to say, well, no, these guys stuck with us through the pandemic and. You know, et cetera, let's give them six percent.
So is that something that would be helpful since we're kind of in that discussion right now to just kind of. See, are we comfortable with the three percent? Uh, forecast as the, the revenue increase, the sales tax increase, because that's gonna drive a lot of our next. Numbers, right? Like, that sounds reasonable to me. I think the fact that we've got the lumberyard coming online this year, it's like a couple of years ago and we kept saying, well, when City Market comes online. We'll see extra money come in and we're seeing that, some of that extra money.
We're not gonna see the lumberyard this year.
I'm talking about in twenty twenty three.
No, no.
We won't.
No, if I just ask for a one-year extension. Cause they can't get stuff to get the basic uh.
Sidewalks and stuff.
And the lumberyard is, is a contractor oriented business, so they're gonna be. Doing it, it's a use tax situation, so the retail sales tax off of that may be a lot lower than we might expect.
But I mean, I'll be shocked if they open their doors in twenty twenty three.
Okay, so take that off the table then. Forget I said lumberyard. Are we comfortable with um? A three percent increase in sales tax revenue?
Sure, I mean, we have. Our um reserves are over a hu- over a hundred percent?
Uh, at a hundred.
At a hundred percent. That's never happened in the six years we've been here. You know, we were always happy if it was seventy five percent. And like you pointed out, it went down to sixty five percent when the situation.
This is just a question about the forecast, not.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, yeah.
We've been conservative for the last, since I've been on the board and been exceeding it every single year.
I'm pretty sure that since two thousand ten, it hasn't dropped below five percent.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm comfortable with three, but I want to make sure that we're also. Um, it's great, we have a big reserve, but it's also our job to make sure that we do get new bathrooms in parks. Where they are total garbage. And I told Eric, I am super motivated to get our bathrooms better because I'm at these fields with these little soccer players. Who go in there and they're like, that is gross. So I just, um, I feel like we have the money. It's okay if we take our. Budget, uh, our, our fund balance down to seventy five next year. And allocate more funding elsewhere, because that's also our job, so um. Or if we, you know, have mu- money left over this year to put towards projects like that, that staff have been hoping to get done. Um, so I'm comfortable with three percent, but I think we should acknowledge that we have been very low. Every single year and every, and every year it's been the same message of like, well, everybody else is being really conservative and who knows what's gonna happen and we're like. So I think.
Go for it with the three percent.
I'm okay with it.
And then I agree, I think that in our follow-up conversations and in our two-on-twos, this question of um fund balance. Let's continue that conversation because I completely agree with everything you've said. We, we don't ask people to pay taxes for the town to pad its reserves. We need reserves for a rainy day. And to be strategic at key moments, like when we bought the parking lot, we bought the Public Works Building, done really well. We don't need to just sit on that forever, so we have some big projects ahead of us. And I'm really excited that we're in a position to have some money in the bank to get some stuff done, so.
I just wanted to add that um. You, right now, the budget. That is in front of you um would end up having our fund balance be at eighty four percent. If we. Did both the Crystal River Restoration two hundred thousand and the bathroom, it would drop it to eighty one percent.
Are we comfortable? I mean, it seems like a good time to give a little feedback on that with.
Eighty four to eighty one?
Some of that fund balance so that we can. Essentially, the cost increase on the Crystal River Restoration Plan, it, what Eric's telling us is. We're having to go back and ask everybody else for more money and they're gonna ask us, well, are you putting in more money? So we can say, yeah, we're putting in more and not delay the bathrooms um.
What happens if we get to the, there and we suddenly, and it's like. We actually need five hundred thousand dollars.
We'll have that discussion. We won't have spent the money.
No, then we discuss it.
Colin.
I'm fine with that. I just, I, I sent a U note and Eric a note about the Garfield County Conservation Trust Fund. Has he contacted them or are we eligible?
I, I don't know. I only saw him for like thirty seconds.
Uh, they helped, I think Red Hill. We might be out of line now. They're, I like, they like to move around, but I think Silk just got the money, but. I'd be just curious, could we go use this and get more from Garfield County?
Well, that's the whole point is it's supposed to be matching funds. So it would take our contribution from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand of a two and a half million dollar project.
Also, the HP uh CC. I think it's important to know what it was that they were asking for.
They're, they're asking for nine thousand dollars.
Oh, so I mean, that's like a no-brainer.
I, I just, I just haven't seen it yet, so I don't know.
I think it was for, because I had had a consult, uh, conversation with one of their leaders. I don't know, months ago, and. I think it was for like a consultant to advise on some work about historic preservation designations, something like that. So at any rate, um, just to give a little bit of direction or we can come back to it, do we feel like we're comfortable with moving forward in this budget? With definitely the three percent increase, we've said yes to that. And then leaving two hundred thousand in there, both for bathrooms and a separate extra two hundred thousand. On top of what's in there right now, so that would actually be six hundred thousand toward the Crystal River Restoration, because right now we have two hundred from water fund. Two hundred from general fund, rec fund, and then this would be two hundred from fund balance, so we'd be contributing six hundred to that.
I'm comfortable with that.
I can just, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I could put that as a transfer into the rec fund if that would make it easier just to show where all that money is. Whatever you guys would want me to do.
Okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm ready to get that out of my hair.
If it comes back and the bids are better or the grants are better or whatever, we won't.
Could you speak about?
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just agree with Erica. We don't want to take it away from bathroom improvements.
I actually care about both of those two projects more than Eighth Street. In my opinion, we have, we have, we've achieved the. Functional objective. Like the main functional objective of that project, which was getting a real sidewalk, at least one side down that thing. And at this point, it's more of an aesthetic and like tying the thing up in a bow, so I don't, if we have to, I'm okay with. Punting part of that and just working on the, just working on the, you know, and the crosswalk at the north end of it or something. And then also on the roundabout thing, I don't know if you've got wind of this, but there was talk of that the district, C dot District Three or whatever we are in. In Grand Junction has a standing contract with a roundabout designer.
I was there for that.
Yeah, if, I mean, I don't know how much we can put, put onto them, but if, if we could try to like push as much of our. Just if they have to review it anyway, if we can push as much of our design into their court as possible, that would be great, I think.
They suggested. Great. Um, yeah, and that's what I'm sure a lot of us have our eye on some of that fund balance for, like, maybe we can actually get some of this stuff done that we've been talking about for years on one thirty three between roundabout and crossings. Let's keep moving through the.
Okay, you ready, you ready, Marty? So first, first about cola. Um, we did put money in for cola. What, what we did.
Define cola for the general public.
Adjustment, sorry, thank you, thank you. No, I, I sometimes am not as conscious of that as I should be. Uh, we. Budgeted for three to five percent depending on the salary survey now. We budgeted for three to five percent depending on the salary survey numbers. What um Christie did was calculate out, um, I think you based it on a five percent cola. And then we added another seven and a half percent in the budget for whatever was going to come out of the salary survey. That seven and a half, that additional seven and a half percent also includes the potential for the additional costs of workman's comp and, you know, FICA and, you know, what have you. That's all got to be in there as well. Um, the salary survey um is, I would say about three quarters of the way done. Um, we have some reporting from Employers Council, but um we're checking it for errors and things that don't make sense. At this point, we found a couple. We are also um very cognizant that once we get uh an approach for salary grades and wage ranges and everything else, we're going to have to go employee by employee by employee and really, you know, honor them and respect their experience, where they are in their current salary grade. We have to follow the Equal Pay Act to, to figure out, you can't just say, well, they're with the new salary wages. Now they're under the grade, so we can, we just have to bring them up to the minimum because that would violate the law. So it's going to be a little complicated and we frankly sort of put that aside for a week so that we could get this going.
Go ahead. Well, I was going to say, so uh, what you're saying is you've budgeted anywhere from ten and a half to twelve percent. Overall salary increase into this budget.
Twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half percent.
On average.
On average has twelve and a half percent of our total salary, total payroll.
Right.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine.
Yep.
So that's already in here. We still don't know what the survey is going to show.
And we, we also don't know, it may very well be, there are some of our positions that we are being told are quite a ways off from where they should be. And so we may find when we go through that, that there are things that we don't have enough in the budget to do in one year. We may come back to the board and say, well, this is, this is fairly substantial. Maybe we can do from this pay range to this pay range all in one year. And from this, we do it over a period of two years or what have you. Um, but we're not really sure what the best approach is going to be yet because we really have to dig into the weeds.
Speaking of the weeds, um, you and I had spoken about other things just besides straight salary.
Yep.
Has, has that been?
Uh, you're talking about the benefits?
Yeah, benefits.
What Christie and I talked about, thank you for that, Marty, because it's important to say in here. Um, what we talked about is handling the salary piece now and then getting a bigger picture of what's possible for benefits and what that might cost in twenty twenty-three, because that's probably a several month process and we didn't want to try to rush that for the, for the budget.
Yeah, and then in addition to that, you needed a, an overhaul of your employee handbook with that too.
Got it.
So we need to, we need some updates in there for law, so that's why we put that in the budget too.
And we'd have to budget for the update to the handbook.
We did, right, it's in here.
Yes.
Okay, I, I have a, a question. You'd spoken about the police asking for vehicles that are not in the budget. Can you just clarify, what vehicles are they asking for?
The police came in and asked for two additional, and I, I think that was at a meeting here.
Was this take-home vehicles?
Uh, no, but that, that's something different. The police asked for two additional school resource officers positions.
Okay.
And with that, they wanted an additional vehicle because they would have more people. And we did not, because we didn't do this to school resource officers, we didn't add the additional vehicle.
Okay, got it.
So that's what that is. There are still, I believe, two police vehicles in the budget for next year. One that we couldn't get from this year.
Right.
And one that we would have done next year anyway.
Got it.
Can we talk about why the, those were cut out or, or was that?
Why the school resource officers were cut out?
Yeah, or do you not want to get into that yet?
Um, well, they, I, I will take my guidance from the board, but based on the conversation at the board meeting, um, I believe that uh Ben asked for some data. And there really isn't the data out there. I know, uh, all of our surrounding towns have one school resource officer, no matter how many schools they have. Um, and that would have added about two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the budget between the two officers and the, and the additional car. Um, so you know, if the board decides that they want to, um, that they get the data and they want to add that, but that's fine, but I didn't feel like that was a closed loop.
Okay.
And we also talked to, to the police chief about, you know, with the, with the salary survey piece of it and knowing that there's a lot of changes that are probably going to happen with the, you know, maybe a step system or salary grades for the police officers, um, you know, there might there might need to be a, a prioritization there of, you know, we can't do everything at once. So um, you know, but I will certainly take my, my lead from the board.
Yeah, that's something we can go into more detail and I think later. Any other highlights or like feedback that Christie or Lauren, that you wanted, highlights you wanted to, for us to talk about or feedback on kind of big next steps um for tonight?
I'd say thank you. I saw you transferred a hundred thousand into the housing fund. And uh, I mean, we talked about attainable, affordable, employee housing, worker housing, whatever you want to call it. We can't do anything without money and while a hundred thousand won't solve our problems, it just adds to the fund balance, so maybe we can do something meaningful. If not this year, in the years ahead.
And that fund balances at a million dollars now, and that's because we've been.
We started out with fifty thousand. You and I started out.
And then there's been some money coming into it, I think from some real estate transfer assessments from some of the new um annexations as well as the I don't know, there's just some other funds that come into that. But any other kind of high level, Lauren or Christie, um, things you wanted to highlight or that you wanted to get our feedback on tonight? I'm not trying to rush this. I just want to make sure we stay focused on that high level stuff and give you the feedback that you needed at this very initial discussion.
Um, anything?
Yeah, the only thing I would say um is uh there was a um, now, just correct you, uh, yeah, here, I've got it here. Um, we didn't really talk about the wastewater and water funds, what we were looking at increasing the rate increases, if you guys know about those. Well, Lauren, did you want to?
That's a plan that was developed, I think, and approved by the board. It's a five-year plan. And I think this is.
Year five?
Fourth or fifth year of that.
Oh, great. Okay.
Yeah, so that's already in writing, approved by the board.
Great.
Um.
That's where that pumpback project is already in writing and stuff.
Yeah, and we can talk about it because it's got a lot of interesting.
Okay.
It's just a deeper like.
Historical requirements.
Yeah.
Did anyone have any questions about any of the pieces of information that were in the packet? The reporting, anything that isn't um explainable easily, you know, in your own mind? Um, we're happy to answer that question. I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be able to answer more in these two-on-twos. Um.
Actually, I want to, Ben, do you remember on the Streetscape Fund? We had to get that reauthorized by the voters.
Yeah.
Was that two years ago?
I feel like it's a little bit further back, but yeah.
And we got a ten-year authorization, I think.
What is it, a sales tax or?
Um, I forget where the money comes from, but basically we've used it for uh, street projects, for a sidewalk. I think the third street project was done with that money. Bought this parking lot right here with that money and that's why it went down so low. We actually had a deficit. Now we are building it back up. I see uh three hundred and seventy-eight thousand uh, beginning twenty twenty-three and we're projecting revenues of two hundred and eighty-four thousand to uh end the year with two-thirds of a million dollars, so building that back up. We. It could go to that, it could go to uh our funding towards a roundabout would be appropriate for that.
Well, so I think, and this is actually a good question. One thing that we have had in the budgets in the past that I think would be useful to add was just a one-pager on each fund. And that it addresses these questions because it says like the Streetscape Improvement Fund comes from this source and is dedicated to these expenditures, you know, by statute essentially. Cause like when I looked at it, I couldn't remember what the development fund was. Um, and so I think that that would be a helpful, maybe when we have our two.
An explanation.
Yeah, and it, it exists, like it's in.
Yeah.
Last year's.
Actually, we're planning to put that in because usually that is not in the preliminary budget when we looked in, so we were going to add those in. So that's why I added the, kept this with me, because that, yeah, but yeah, that's on the radar. But it looked like um the ordinance was going to be um well, let's see here, it's um expire, let's see, to be extended is December thirty-first, twenty thirty for that.
Right, okay, so it was in twenty twenty. It's two years ago, we got it uh re-approved for a ten-year extension.
Yeah.
Um, our fees from building permits, developments, I assume we're, I shouldn't assume. I'm thinking that you are projecting that those are going to go down in twenty twenty-three.
Uh, for which fees?
For the building fees.
Building fees, development fees.
Yes. Pretty substantially. Yeah.
Streetscape Fund thing, I know, I've this, I'm, I hate to get back into a specific thing, but it's a huge item is the street sweeper. Is the street sweeper a necessary item to like main, actually the maintenance of our, like the actual like breakdown of our streets? Is that what it's about? Or is it simply a beautification thing?
No, it's not a beautification thing. It's um.
A drainage thing?
It's drainage. It, I mean, obviously it has an aesthetic piece to it, but um it's drainage and trash and, you know.
Safer for biking.
Safer for biking and all of that.
Yeah, and we use that um year-round. I mean, I feel like I see it twice a year, but maybe it's just that's one that's on my it's not on, ever on my street because I think it would suck up all the, the chip seal.
No, they, they use it a lot. It's not just like a once a year.
It's on each street a lot.
Thing. Um, and um, the one that they have now is twenty years old. Like it's way past its life.
They make a cool electric one now.
Yeah.
And is there, I guess, so it gets in a sufficient use that it's not something that we could conceivably think about? You know, going in with basalt on one street sweeper and they take it a month and we take it another month or something.
The question, we had that discussion.
So let's see if there's um feedback on, are there any additional sort of charts, graphs, explanations, exhibits? And then let's talk about what department heads or departments we'd like to dig in deeper to. So um, any other charts, graphs, exhibits? I mentioned the, and it sounds like that was already in the plan. Um, the funds, descriptions, any other kind of explanations, visuals?
Just generally, um, based on what Chris just brought up, um, you know, the capex stuff and then depreciation.
Capex.
Capital expenditures.
Okay.
Um, you know, and then depreciation, right? So I imagine if the existing street sweeper is twenty years old, it's got to be fully depreciated, right? So if we did a reserve study, that would be off the list. So this is going to be a replacement rather than an improvement.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
And um, and there will be a report to the board um as part of the budget process of capital improvement plan and you know, what's going out in the next five years.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's kind of, you know, where my head is and it's in that particular bucket. And then the rest of it would be just ordinary expenses for operational purposes.
Yeah.
But that's it for me, yeah.
Any other explanations? I mean, we mentioned that kind of infographic style, you know, one-pager. Are we thinking about doing that again? The one that you brought originally from, was it Thornton or?
Yes, I have that on my computer. That's all like heat up.
Okay, great. I just think that that's a really nice digestible version that, that we kind of end up using as a reference when people say what's in the budget. And I think for the public, that's nice as well. Okay, then uh if there's nothing else on like graphics and demonstrations, what about what um departments? And, and if we don't know yet, we can give that info later, but I think Lauren would probably like to let um department heads know if we're expecting them next week. Um, who would we like to hear from? I'd like to hear from water wastewater.
I was just saying, Chris has some questions about, that'd be a good time to talk about it.
Yeah, I think some of those could be handled on the history side outside the meeting, but um, you know, that we've talked about kind of having a water conservation goal. And then E-Board is talking about that and I mentioned it when Kevin was here and I don't see that in here yet. So I just want to talk through, um, what, what might that look like in a budget where we're spending money to produce less water rather than spending money to produce more water? Um, as we, as we grow.
So uh when Eric was here, he overheard the conversation and apparently south of the roundabout.
Yes.
He can't get anybody for the RFP for irrigation. And uh his thought was, could we take that amount? I don't think we'd need to use that amount. It's like seven hundred thousand dollars to explore what we could do south of the roundabout on our property around reducing water. Um, and maybe that's something we do with E-Board. Maybe they help us identify where we do it. But it sounds like we've got money that we were going to spend on irrigation that we could just reallocate to conservation. And maybe we discussed, doesn't need to be that much. And reallocate some of that money somewhere else or it's within rec, so maybe it pays for the bathrooms.
Another bathroom.
Or another set of bathrooms or something like that, but it sounds like Eric already opened the door. Uh, so we should definitely try and get that money as fast as possible. Uh, but I would think we could start there.
Well, the one thing that it could go towards would be that head gate at the Weaver Ditch, right? Because that is going to help regulate the inflow to the crystal, which is part of conservation just generally broadly. Um, if that's going to be part of the restoration project that needs.
Already working on that. They didn't want to wait on that.
Yeah, okay.
It's nine, so let's just, who else would we like to hear from? Um, usually we hear from everybody, so we're trying to narrow it down to like what departments do we really want to dig in in a setting like this? Christie, you have others?
Um, I don't know what department this is, but I just was sort of thinking in the wake of the clear meeting and this whole discussion of this choke point on, on qualified labor for like what is the status of CMC's programs around that kind of stuff? Is there any additional funding they would, could use or something to try to cultivate the supply of plumbers and electricians that we need? Because it seems like that's kind of like what's killing us in a lot of these efficiency things is we have lots of ideas. We'd like to buy heat pumps or whatever, but then we have nobody to install them. I, I don't know if that's, I just, I think, I don't know who you asked that question to, but I just thought I should bring that up maybe.
I think that would be a good question for um Clear and, you know, their regional partners because it has been identified as like trade school. I don't know if we would need to identify it as like, but maybe they research it and see what opportunities are out there. And if there would be a need for us to provide some grants for people to attend or something. Yeah.
As well as CMC, they're starting a program uh here in Carbondale at their campus in partnership with CoVenture. So those will be a couple that, you know, you might weaken.
That would be something I would be excited to try to throw a little money at if it was useful to some, in some way. I mean, but if it's not.
Development, workforce development.
Workforce development around that specific issue.
Other departments that we want to hear from? We're going to have a pretty quick budget process. That's okay. I mean, I think that like Lauren said, we had department heads come in and give us their goals. Now they've put numbers to those goals. We're going to review this in small groups. We can, we can always call somebody back, but um, I mean, would, and if it's just me on the water wastewater, I can just go talk to Mark and Kevin and Eric on my own. Is that a conversation the board would like to have?
I think that's an important one for us to have publicly as well. And even answering that Nell Creek question, because people are going to see that in the budget and wonder like, wait, what are we doing? We're sending water back up to Nell Creek, you know, and so they just, um, we have to remember that like the public setting, the public also has questions. And so um for us discussing those here, I think is reasonable.
Okay.
And I would just say like the E-Board has expressed a tremendous amount of frustration about not seeing any of their priorities in our budgets. Um, at least in the last couple, and I'm, I don't think that's entirely. Um, at least in the last couple, and I'm, I don't think that's entirely accurate, but, um, I, I think trying to explain where we are making progress in that realm is good.
That pumpback's a micro hydro, just so you know. That's actually the coolest thing about it. Um, so anything else, Christie, that you needed from us tonight? Lauren?
Um, I think this starts the direction and, um, then, then, um, and the conversation.
One thing, and I know they're not on the same track, but so we did a comp plan update. That we haven't adopted yet.
Yeah.
And it would seem that there should be some connection between our comp plan and our budget.
Yep.
I'm not saying it needs to be complete and we don't wanna hold one up. But, and I think we probably know a fair amount about the budget, uh, the comp plan update to kind of represent it. But at some point, it might be worth just making that more clear to people that we didn't just go through this whole process to update our comp plan and, but we're spending all this money over here. Just, just a general comment that hopefully we could get to so that there more, why are you spending this money? Well, this is why.
Right. I mean, it could even be part of the summary PDF document that we put together last year where maybe we even call out like this achieves the comp plan goal of X, Y, Z or whatever.
And another.
Articulate it.
Yeah, no, that's great. Another, um, opportunity to intersect these things is the, um, CIP plan, uh, capital improvement plan study. Um, you get your comprehensive plan in there that's mostly capital items and, and you just, you intersect all of that together into your budget document. It'll weave together nicely. It takes a little bit of time.
Sure.
But that, that could work.
And I saw that in there, and we're just focusing on town buildings right now. Are we?
For the capital needs study?
Yeah. Are we thinking?
No, we're, we're focusing on town buildings and probably not all of them.
Okay.
Because otherwise it would probably add a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. But it's, it's probably a great first.
Yeah, this is, this is a baby step.
All right. I think we're at, um, the end of our meeting then. Thank you again for this. I, the only other thing I'd mentioned that it was just great to see is I think this is the first time we've dedicated funding for translation in our budget.
We have translation and interpretation in there in two different.
Yeah, it's usually sort of an afterthought and then we look for money for it and we've, you know, we've done a lot of things that are coming out of these boards and commissions and plans, but there's actually an increase for, I think, both GCE and Clear. They're working on their work plans for us. Um, we've got a, a, um, information officer, you know, we've got a a communications person for the first time, so we are making some progress on those things. Next week on our agenda for work session, we had it open for budget review for departments. So I think it'll be, we'll do our two-on-twos if we can do them before then or, or shortly thereafter and then we'll um, ask for at least water wastewater, maybe, maybe parks to, to come in and talk, um, water use reduction kinds of ideas. But that might be a fairly short meeting and we can, anything else that arises about the budget between now and then?
Did we get, uh, from Kevin? He usually gives us like the one-year, five-year, ten-year.
It, no, it's on for the twenty-fifth.
Yep, okay.
Tonsils out on Friday, so I may not be, uh, may not be, I will not be here and I will, may not be on there.
Okay, all right.
Good to hear. Might not be that big of a meeting.
All right.